Good morning. This is the New York City Board of Standards and Appeals Public Hearing for March 3, 2015. We'll begin with a special order calendar. Item number one, continued hearing, 19502VZ, 2797 Linden Boulevard, Brooklyn.
Is anyone here for this?
No, it's adjourned.
We were asked to adjourn it, but we weren't asked for how long, so I'm just throwing out an idea for a month. So, the submission on, let's see, the 2nd of April, which is a Thursday, a new idea, more than an idea, a new regime.
Cool.
Okay, a Thursday, the April 2nd, for a hearing on the 14th of April.
Appeals calendar, item number two, 18014A, 332 West 44th Street, Manhattan.
Good morning. David Karnowski, Fried Frank, land use counsel to the appellant.
No, I think it's David.
No, I moved my...
Yeah, but you gotta, we gotta be able to pick you up.
Yeah.
Sorry.
Sorry.
No, no.
David.
This appeal has been briefed very extensively by the parties, and I'm not going to repeat all the arguments and counter arguments that have been made. We did want to say that while this case may appear novel, the arguments we have made are not, and in fact, they derive directly from this board's decisions in the Varick Street case, which we believe provides the framework for deciding this matter. So we thought it bears some emphasis to describe what the board said in that case, and then to evaluate how DOB's arguments measure up to the board's own criteria. First, as you know, this case implicates the relationship of paragraph B of the 1210 sign definition to the other elements of the sign definition. And in that regard, in the Varick Street case, the board specifically rejected the approach that's advocated here by DOB. In that case, the board found that paragraph, that paragraph B of the section 1210 definition of a sign, quote, "acknowledges that there are examples of writing, pictorial representation, emblems, flags, or other characters which announce, direct attention to, or advertise, and there are those that do not do any of those things," end quote. And therefore, the board said, quote, "The complete criteria for signs is enumerated so as to make clear that writing or pictorial representation, along with being located on a wall alone," in other words, "without satisfying the B-prong of the definition, "do not meet the criteria for a sign and would fit into some other category not regulated by DOB," end quote. In this case, DOB, over and over again, has said the opposite. It has said that words inherently announce because that is their only function. It has said that it will consider enforcement action against the text-based art displays found on the Macy's parking garage in Brooklyn, which we brought to the board's attention. It has said that the proposed Bravo display is a sign because Bravo is a, quote, "specific word expressed in a particularly symbolic way that conveys language and data with a universally accepted meaning." In other words, that Bravo is a word.
Excuse me, sir, you're blocking our camera. Sorry. Sorry, David.
That's okay. Technical difficulties. Second, the board in the Varick case found, both with respect to the definition of advertising and with respect to the underlying 1210 definition of a sign, that, quote, "the sign must announce, direct attention to, or advertise something outside of the sign itself." Interpreting the 1210 definition otherwise, the board recognized, quote, "would lead to absurd results, as any object that is visible could be argued to direct attention to itself by the mere act of being seen." This approach outlined by the board is fully consistent with the language of the B-prong of the definition. For a display of words to direct attention means that the words are used to refer to or to describe something other than themselves. For a display of words to advertise similarly means that the words are used to refer to or to describe something other than themselves. And similarly, to announce means to make a statement about something external to the words themselves. That is our common sense understanding of what it means to announce. You announce something. This approach towards the phrase "announce, direct attention to, or advertise" ascribes to each of these terms a similar understanding that the display of words form a sign when the words are used to refer to or describe something external to themselves. As the board said in the Varick Street case, there must be a reasonable nexus between the display and something external to the display in order for it to be considered a sign. Here, DOB has tried to argue that the Bravo display, in fact, does have a nexus to something external to itself. It has said that the Bravo display announces or directs attention to or advertises parking in that Bravo means "congratulations, you've made it across the Lincoln Tunnel and into Manhattan, now park here." It's said that because the word Bravo comes out of the theater tradition and the parking garage is located close to this theater subdistrict, that the display therefore advertises the availability of theater parking to motorists. It is said that because, it is said that because the display would be large and potentially attractive, it would draw the eye's attention to the parking facility and be used to direct attention to parking. And it has said alternatively that because Bravo is a theater term, it is a sign that advertised not necessarily parking, but the theater district in general. Each of these attempts to argue that the Bravo display would have a nexus to parking or the theater subdistrict is strained, speculative, and defies common sense, as we've discussed at length in our papers, and I won't repeat our points further here. The Bravo facade would do no more than display a word with a commonly understood meaning of "congratulations," without any reference to any who, what, when, or where. Like many art and design pieces, and much like the architecture of a building, it therefore refers only to itself. And despite DOB's attempts to ascribe to it a particular meaning in reference to something beyond its dictionary meaning, it would contain no such announcement. Now, DOB has characterized our approach as one under which the only display of words on the building that would be classifiable as a sign would be something like "park here," and that's not the case. We've been clear that the use of other types of words or images on a parking garage might be found to have a reasonable nexus, using the board's term, to the parking use. For example, a picture on the facade of an automobile. Or perhaps words like "had enough" going around in circles. And there could be cases where the presence or absence of a nexus between words and parking might be difficult to discern and a matter for fair dispute, but that is not the case here. DOB has also suggested that the reasonable nexus standard may not exhaust circumstances where a non-commercial display is a sign, and has said that non-commercial messages could include messages without a particular nexus to a particular use on a particular zoning lot or a particular service or product that still be used to generally announce and direct attention to a topic or idea such as end illiteracy, water shortage, and smoking kills. But I don't think that the reasonable nexus standard enunciated by the board is limited to asking the question whether there is a nexus between words and a product or service conducted on or off the zoning lot. What the board was really saying, we believe, is this: is there a reasonable nexus between the words and something external to them? And that can include a non-for-profit cause or a social movement, the end illiteracy example. But none of that is the case with the Bravo display. It is not announcing anything other than itself. Now, at yesterday's review session, the board asked the parties to define with greater precision a distinction between non-commercial signs subject to the zoning resolution and art. And I think it's difficult to address this issue in that particular way because the zoning resolution does not contain any exemption for art. There is no definition of art in zoning, and I don't think that for that matter there should be one because doing so would get us into very difficult issues about authorship, creativity, quality, and provenance. These are things that government probably should not get into. Now, DOB went down this path at the first public hearing by suggesting that perhaps the Bravo display could be considered not to be a sign if it were created at the initiative of a real artist rather than commissioned by a building owner, with the apparent thought underlying this, that, this, underlying this distinction being that anything commissioned by a appellant was inherently suspect as having a commercial motive. That is a dangerous path to go down. And parenthetically, it's a view that is wholly antithetical to the idea that private citizens should be encouraged to beautify and improve their buildings with elements of visual and architectural interest. While the zoning resolution does not contain an exemption for art, it does create a space for art by recognizing through the sign definition that the function of a sign is to announce, direct attention to, or advertise something external to itself. And that something can be commercial in nature, a product or a service, or non-commercial in nature, a statement regarding a nonprofit event, a politician, or a cause, for example. Where a display does not do this, it is not a sign, and much of art and design fits this description. And of course, it's our position that that is the case here with the Bravo display. The board recognized this function of the B-prong of the 1210 definition in relation to art when it said in the Varick Street case that, quote, "the exclusion of art installations from the definitions of sign and accessory sign protects the rights of artists and their expression." Now, the board surely understood that there was no express exemption for art under the zoning resolution, but that the requirement that words or pictorial representations announce, direct attention to, or advertise has this effect to a large degree. Of course, there are forms of art of what we might think of as art that meet the definition of a sign. A company could commission a world-class artist to create outdoor displays that directly or perhaps indirectly direct attention to or advertise its products or services. These displays might be wildly inventive, very creative, visually interesting, and maybe even museum-worthy, but they would still be signs under zoning. It's also possible, it seems to me, that a non-commercial display by an artist could qualify as a sign, and that's because art can be used to convey a message about something that is external to itself. For example, if an artist creates an outdoor display that includes the words "stop climate change now," it can be classified as a sign despite the artistic approach taken towards conveying the message about climate change. In short, we think that the board has already largely defined the distinction between non-commercial signs and displays of words that are not signs in a way that protects much, but not necessarily all, of what we might call art. And that distinction, found in paragraph B, as interpreted by the board in the Varick Street case, is between a display of words that has a reasonable nexus to something other than itself and a display that only draws attention to itself. And applying that distinction in this case, the Bravo display is not a sign. One other thing, I did want to respond to Commissioner Higginson's question yesterday whether the word Bravo may be used in the future by a appellant on any of its other buildings. And a appellant has no plans to display the word Bravo on any of its other buildings or to in any way tie it to the advertising or branding of its facilities on, in any media format.
I think, Mike, well, question is actually a little bit broader than that.
Okay.
I think, and perhaps you could put me on the right track if I've got it wrong, but I think that you described in your papers that this was an upgrade to a facade
Yes.
that was part of a larger marketing scheme. So although Bravo may not be used, in terms of sort of the marketing scheme, would other words be used on, on similar facilities and therefore, over time, become the sign? We all know, we would all know in a year from now that, that these facilities will, are marked by, you know, some sort of word that says something, whether it's in relationship to where the facility is or not, but, but over time has now become the marketing tool, the commercial sign.
Well, I think what I said was that the display is part of an overall upgrade to this facility. This facility was purchased not that long ago. It needs work, structural work and other kinds of work to upgrade it and bring it into...
I think what Commissioner Higginson's referring to is, early in the papers, there you have also a storage facility, the client has a storage facility.
Right.
And there was a proposal to add a sign to that, or add words to that facility, and there was concern about actually the text there being too close to the subject of storage. So that, we had that conversation early on. Maybe that's what you're talking about, upgrades of other facilities?
Well, upgrades of other facilities that, that might be either owned by this particular person or the franchise, but I, I think it's a little bit broader than, than what the chair has, has expressed. That, I guess my concern would be that, that individually, looking at this sort of in isolation, perhaps arguably, it could be a sign or not a sign. But if one were to extend this to other facilities where this, where the design in itself would become the, the advertising sign for the facility, sort of like the Target sign. It's just a question that I think, you know, bears some thought when you kind of take this to the next, next step.
Well, again, there is no plan, no intention of using the Bravo in any other facilities. And the idea that somehow Bravo becomes, in effect, a kind of brand, I don't think is, is a possibility here. Could it be sometime in the future that another facility might similarly try to employ something of visual interest like this? I can't say. But there is no intention of using the word Bravo as a common feature of the facilities that are owned jointly by this entity.
Or other words?
Or other...
Other words besides...
Not presently. I can't say that they, in the future, that another facility might want to do something of similar visual interest. But it would not be Bravo.
Understood. So, can you just go back, you made two points about, because we've been focusing on the non-commercial
Yes.
sign. Just go back and, and slowly state again, when it, non-commercial would fall into the, say, let's just say, not a sign, so therefore protecting art?
Well, I think, what I was trying to say is that I think that that adheres in the sign definition as understood by the board in the Varick Street case. There are non-commercial messages that don't necessarily refer to a product or a service, and the use of the term reasonable nexus in the Varick Street was, case was more focused on, on that because the underlying issue had to do with an advertising sign.
So if you talk about the garage in Brooklyn, the Steve Power...
Right. So, so I think that a non-commercial message that conveys something external to itself, save the whales, end illiteracy now, stop the war in Iraq, and so forth, is a sign. But as the board said, if the display uses a word but does not announce, and it understood that to me, and does not have anything other, there's not anything other than self-referential, then it is not a sign, which, which means that that forms a distinction among certain kinds of non-commercial displays, some of which are signs and some of which are not.
So effectively, it's using the building or the structure on which it's located as a canvas more than to refer to something that occurs off-site?
It, it, well, if you mean by off, well, it's a little confusing because if you mean by off-site in terms of a, a use or product, a product sold or a use conducted off-site...
No, I'm staying with non-commercial.
Right. With non-commercial, it can refer to, obviously, an activity conducted off-site. It can refer to a, a cause or a social issue or something of that nature, which is not necessarily identified with a particular location. But that is distinct from, we believe, from something like this Bravo display, which does not do any of those things.
Okay. So, so just to take that one step further, so in the example of the water tank and putting the word H2O on that, or drought, does that fall within your criteria for essentially protest speech?
It might be.
Might be.
Yeah. I'm not, I'm not actually familiar with that circumstance. We discussed it a bit, but we never got clarity on what it really was.
Right.
So it could be.
Okay. Okay. Any other questions for Mr. Karnowski? Okay, thank you.
I just wanted to reiterate that we do believe that this has been fully briefed and asked, that the hearing be closed at the end of today's session, and that the board proceed to a decision.
And you'll also submit this testimony you've written?
Sure.
Thank you.
That's too small, sorry.
It's very small.
You can take that, I think we take that thing, right, the metal thing, and push it up?
Yeah.
So hold it.
It'll hold. We know what it looks like.
Yeah, we could turn the light on.
We've got it.
What?
Can we turn the light on it?
Maybe we can spotlight it.
Yeah. Can you turn the spotlight on?
Yeah.
Oh, there we go.
There we go. Need to improve your visual skills.
Yes, all right. As everyone is, we're a little short on resources, so that's the best we could do. Alex Berger, Department of Buildings, here for the Bravo case, as you know. There should be no doubt that the Bravo sign satisfies the sign definition in the ZR. The sign definition is broad because City Planning intended it to be, and DOB has to enforce the intent of City Planning. They are the initial drafters of the zoning resolution. So this case is about our application, DOB's application, of City Planning's text. Department of City Planning has submitted a letter to the board, and they support our application of this text, and they say it's consistent with the drafter's intent. And they also say to determine that this display is not a sign under zoning would be inconsistent with the text. As the General Counsel for Department of City Planning stated in her January 29, 2015 letter to the board, "If the board were to accept the appellant's arguments, it could have far-reaching and severe consequences. Furthermore, the drastic change in the application of sign regulations across all boroughs of the city would have occurred absent the citywide public review process, which would accompany, normally accompany such a change."
Just a question, did that City Planning letter explain why this is a sign? Did it go into any detail to give guidance?
It definitely stated that, that it is, Bravo is a theater term, and it is a sign, just as a business sign that conveys a message. The letter goes on for many reasons. There's a symbol of the theater, and it's a widely recognized one.
So, so City Planning is saying it can find a nexus between the word Bravo and the theater?
I think it can find it between the Bravo and the theater and Bravo and the business itself.
And how did it make it with the business?
Well, the business itself, it goes to the congratulatory remark of the...
Congratulations, you have a business?
Congratulations, you've made it here, you're parking, thank you, welcome. It's a commercial transaction, and these are terms that are used to express gratitude in a commercial transaction.
But, but City Planning didn't go into any kind of sort of conceptual framework for how you might be guided for the next sign, did it?
In their letter, they did not. That is correct.
So how do we follow guidance, then? What's our guidance in order to evaluate this with respect to what we were given from City Planning?
The guidance is the definition itself. The terms in the definition are the guidance, whether this directs attention to or announces. There's no other guidance that's really needed. There's no other standard that's really needed, an objective standard based on the terms of the definition. We are applying the same terms of this definition as you are and as Department of City Planning is.
But, so in one, what happened to 111 Varick and the narrowing of that interpretation so at least you could anticipate some result? Because it's such a broad, I mean, essentially, what you've been doing, what DOB has been doing, is disregarding the B requirement and saying that any text, any it all, is, can be seen, therefore announces because it's understandable. So when, in 111 Varick, when the standard was reduced to require there to be a nexus, what happened to DOB's interpretation, use of that standard?
Well, we think we provided you with a good example of the one-way mural where words were used, and there was no reason, but we felt there was no reasonable nexus between that and the premises. Actually, I sat in on yesterday's executive session, and you raised two very good points. And maybe the one-way sign is pointing to the door, and maybe the birds are pointing to that. Maybe we do have to review it again.
Wow.
These things are not as simple as they seem.
Incredibly scary, right?
But we would not have noticed that, I have to tell you.
But that's because we didn't give you enough ti, you didn't have enough time to find a nexus.
We're not as bright as the...
Right? No, you just needed a little more investment in the task, and you would have arrived there for sure.
That was really good.
And that means a lot of white walls with no art on them.
I...
How are you going to protect the artwork, is what I want to know.
There's plenty of artwork in the city. We submitted another one. We submitted what everyone is calling the jumbled letters, but it's a Greg Lamarche mural.
How do you know that's not written in Polish, and you're not fluent in Polish?
Well, we do have interpretation services that we sometimes use.
Did you use it in this case?
I wouldn't in that case because I didn't, it didn't look like anything, any words being formed. We passed it around, and I don't think anyone could see any words.
And if it was written in an alphabet that you're not familiar with, then what?
We could, if someone complained and said this sign is actually saying something offensive or saying something, advertising something in Polish, we would send it to our interpretation team because Department of Buildings has that. And if they said this is it, we'd say, well, sorry, the sign has to come down, or it has to be regulated in some way or another, has to be reduced in size, whatever. These are things that we, these are issues that we face, and that's why actually, there is no blanket test that can be made. Everything's kind of going to have to come in for a review. If the person is unsure of what their sign or art is, they submit a ZRD-1 to the Department of Buildings, and we let them know, here's what the answer is. It is a sign or it's not. You're not going to get violations. Thank you for coming to us and submitting a ZRD-1.
So, but, but basically what you're telling us is you don't have guidance, so therefore you have to take this sort of very open, extremely open, extremely broad, extremely all-inclusive approach, or all-exclusive, depending on how you look at it.
We interpret the definition, there's no minimum context test, there's no four-pronged analysis that's been laid out by the Supreme Court or by anyone here. We have the definition, and in each case, we have to apply the facts of that particular zoning lot, that particular sign or display, to the definition, and that's what we're doing here. In any case, that's what DCP would have to do, that's what this board has to do. There is no magical silver bullet.
But the effect of what you're doing is to eliminate all text, right? If it, if, all text from being outside of, out of the definition of sign, or let's say, include all text in the definition of sign?
No, that's, that's not true. We gave examples of words that do not convey messages.
Like?
The, and it, and we also included a mural that has incidental wordage that is not being used for message purposes. So I think we're not doing that.
But you said, for instance, that, let's say, welcome, and open, and closed
And thank you.
are signs.
Correct.
So if that's true, then why hasn't DOB been measuring the area of all those signs all over the place on every single building and including that in the calculations? It doesn't.
Well, we certainly would include that if, if, first of all, if someone, there would be two ways that we would have to check on something like that. First would be through a permit application. If someone submitted a sign application, they are required to submit the surface area of all the signage on their lot. If they have open or closed signs that are either outside the window or illuminated and inside the window, that certainly has to be counted. And if an inspector or someone complains and we show up there, and that's not in the surface area calculations, that permit will be audited and possibly revoked for not including all relevant information. And if the other sign has to be reduced in surface area because they didn't calculate that open or closed or thanks or welcome sign, that would be the case.
So thanks is us, is an accessory sign?
We believe it's, it's done in, in, it's done in the purpose of a commercial transaction. It's done to announce something to a customer.
What?
Thanks for shopping into this, shopping here. That's the definition of an announcer, making something of public intention. You're making it publicly known to everyone. You're saying, thanks, I'm intending to thank you, I'm announcing, thank you, thanks, you're welcome. Open, closed.
Okay. So, and then if we were to just talk about non-commercial copy, we were talking, we talked about that in the review session yesterday. How would you distinguish non-commercial copy from regulated, let's say, as a regulatable sign versus a non-regulated sign?
As the appellant stated, this is a very gray area, and again, we'd have to apply the definition to each particular sign to see if it is, if it was non-commercial. It could be similar, if there's a discernible message, it's directing you to do something, it's announcing something, then it's a sign.
So like, can you think of a single piece of non-commercial copy that wouldn't, would not be considered a sign, other than the?
That has words in it.
Yeah, that has words in it.
That was not the case before us, but I did submit the, we did submit the one-way mural that has words in it. It's, I have to say, it's highly unusual for someone to put a single word. Department of Buildings, we reached out to our borough commissioners to see if anyone had ever submitted an application for that. No one has ever seen anything like this. This is, this is the first time something like this has happened.
So then, but so, it's turning out that it's not just words that DOB is targeting, it's also imagery. And so, imagery, so we're not limiting this, this whole story to, to words. It seems as if, for example, in the case of a video, a live feed of an ocean, that's somehow or other become, by DOB's analysis, a sign. So where, where's the end?
The end is if the sign, if the sign doesn't meet the sign definition. If the business is...
So, so the live feed of the ocean, for example, or let's just say, not a live feed, a gigantic photograph of the ocean? Leave it at that?
It depends on...
Is that a sign?
Well, again, this context is important, and we have to say, what is this display being used for on the zoning lots or not?
So if they put the gigantic photograph of the ocean on the parking garage, are we good now?
That's good. But if it's on a surf shop, it's a sign.
Okay. Okay. Are there any other questions for DOB?
I just wanted to...
I just wanted to, to, I guess echo a little bit of what the Chair is saying, it troubles me that, that sort of every word that one could think of is a sign. And what comes to mind for me, especially with sort of the integration of the word in this facade, is things like freezes on buildings, right? So court buildings have, you know, in God we trust, a lot of court buildings do, or just buildings that have the name of the building, right, on, that's integrated into its facade, like above the doorway or something like that. Does DOB consider those types of applications as signs and that would be a regulated, in some way regulated sign, depending on where it is and if it's a?
If we had jurisdiction over courthouses, federal or state, I'm not sure that we do, such signs could be regulated.
Well, let's just say, let's just say buildings that belong to the city of New York.
If said in God we trust, that would be a sign, that would be, have to comply with the surface areas, it's, it's a non-commercial message, it's displaying, it's announcing something, in God we trust, and so the definition is very broad, it's announcing that you trust God, I'm not sure what else it's doing, what else is it doing?
And so the Building Department has, has taken a look at those kinds of applications in the past and have deemed those signs?
That I don't know, that I would have to check to see. So we, we might not have jurisdiction over them, but I could ask borough commissioners to see if they've ever come in to apply for such things, I'm not sure if they've been subject to violations, I'm not sure how many 3-1-1 complaints that would be the subject of, so I can check, I am not aware of any enforcement that we've taken.
I think that the pool of those kinds of buildings are probably pretty large, I'm not sure whether the Department, whether you have jurisdiction or not, if you had jurisdiction, the pool of those types of buildings, we see it all the time.
Well, well, in fact, I mean, every church has some sort of an inscription on it in some way, so I guess that church has to take down that, especially if it's in a residence district, which most churches or churches often are, I guess they're going to have to start.
Churches are allowed to have unlimited banners and flags and pennants.
That's banners and flags, but for inscriptions on buildings, which is typical of church design.
They have to comply with the zoning resolution and probably people that live in a residence district across from a big church, they might appreciate that, especially if they don't go to that church.
But what about a statue of, of a saint?
I, I really, I don't really, that's really, that's not before us and that's kind of not even a sign or a statue, but if it was into the wall.
What about all graffiti installations? Are they regulated as signs? Because there's a, there are a lot of stores that actually employ local artists to put graffiti on the walls so that people don't mark up the walls with ugly graffiti, but is that regulated?
It could be if it's, if it displays a sign message, if it announces or directs attention.
Well, for example, you talked about Bravo, I mentioned this, I think, in the review session, you talked about Bravo relating to the theater district. Almost all really good graffiti art, wall art, refers to the neighborhood in which it's located, often with images of important people in the neighborhood or events, pretty referential.
It's possible that these could be subject to the surface area regulations. Can I continue also, I had a little something to say.
Say it again.
Can I continue?
Yeah, sure, go ahead.
I had, everyone has questions. So prong B is satisfied for three independent reasons, we have three reasons for that. First, it announces a congratulatory sentiment to potential and actual customers of the parking garage, that we think is most clear, thanks, welcome, congrats. Acknowledge that in their papers, a couple of times, they said it here, it is a congratulatory remark, now we know. But they say that it lacks a who, what, when, or where, that's what they say, so that it doesn't meet the definition because of that. Well, as with other congratulatory words like thanks, welcome, the who, what, when, or where is explained and understood in the context of a commercial transaction, the business and the customer are the parties that either end of exchange. They're saying Bravo, congrats, business to the customer, it's announcing. By definition, Bravo is an approval, I mean expression of approval and when placed on the garage, it conveys that message and it's an approval to park there. Thus, it's clear that it directs attention and announces the parking garage to potential customers. And under this reasoning, this proximity to the theater district is irrelevant. So that's the congratulatory remark.
Is that related to the celebratory remark, or are you going to do something with that?
That's next. So second, by specifically using the theater term Bravo, it not only conveys an expression of approval, but it directs attention to the location in the theater district. And third, the word Bravo celebrates and evokes the theater district generally, this is more the non-commercial aspect of it, I suppose. As such, it announces and directs, directs attention to it. So the Bravo is a sign if it meets any of those three independent reasons. Congratulatory, it is directing attention to the theater district's location.
So you see where we're going, we're looking for the results of, the ultimate results of DOB's current approach are absurd in the sense that it regulates so much speech and so much content, visual content, as to render, I'd have to argue 100% of the visuals signs, regulated signs, because I can easily make a nexus with absolutely everything, no problem. And, and for example, I love the celebratory one because that's the day that DOB stole Christmas, so, so that's removing the soldiers that are on Sixth Avenue, that's removing the giant bow around Cartier, that's removing all the decorations that go from the very top of Macy's all the way down to the ground, so way higher than allowed by its sign, by sign regulations, et cetera, et cetera. So how come DOB is not enforcing, because there's no complaint against the soldiers?
That is a large part of it, we are, we don't look for problems generally, we have a backlog of complaints, we have a, list of sign complaints, pages of sign complaints, pages of them, and we try and get to them as best we can and we have to prioritize which ones are most important and which ones aren't. And people complain about, well, for Macy's, for example, they're in a special sub-district so they could probably do what they want, other places might be as well. If you're at the Hollister, you're on the, you're on the Fifth Avenue District where you're not allowed to have any illuminated signs and someone like Hollister wants to, they're going to get complaints and if someone puts up Christmas decorations next to them, they might get complaints too. They may have to, yeah, unfortunately, under the zoning, the broad definition of zoning of, of the sign that zoning sets out for us, these might be considered signs because they're being announcing Christmas or holidays, they're directing attention to something. Fortunately, the code, our code does not require a permit for these, so that's a different mechanism why sometimes we don't even review these, because they don't have to come, if it's a holiday decorative display, temporary, they don't have to come get a permit, so we don't even see applications for this, it would only be based on complaints and 3-1-1 complaints. But it is possible that we would have to regulate those.
But don't you think that being complaint-driven is not being fair or transparent and as a city agency, aren't you charged with fairly implementing all policies and standards and procedures throughout the city?
I think we do that.
Well, not if you're complaint-driven, because if you're complaint-driven, then anybody who happens to be a friend of its neighbors is not likely to draw a complaint.
It's an uneven application.
Yeah, it's an uneven application, it's not standardized.
Unfortunately, our inspectors, we have, we don't, we would like more inspectors, we wish we could be more proactive, our numbers have been reduced in the past few years, we, they go out, they do the best job they can, they have to, they try and resolve complaints that people file with 3-1-1, that's what prioritizes, if people in the city are complaining about something, that's going to take priority for DOB, we're going to take that seriously.
But what about signs that were installed pursuant to permits and then, because there's a creative examiner at the time of a complaint being filed, all of a sudden now they're signs, because they can see that the birds flying towards the building are referential to the building.
So they already have a permit, they already have a permit and then subsequently.
Have a permit, because you know that that's happened, right?
The Department is not, is stopped from correcting its mistake and if that was the case there.
But isn't it a mistake, it's more like it's an interpretation today versus the interpretation tomorrow, I mean, you said yourself that maybe those birds are in fact pointing to the sign that's advertising the condos, when, but you didn't see that before, so on the first day it's permitted and on the second day it's illegal.
If some, if a plan examiner who's been there for eight months, he gets this D-14 application for the sign, he says it's okay, but then it, someone brings it to the attention of the borough commissioner, the deputy commissioner, the commissioner himself, is like, no, that person was wrong, he can change his mind, he can, there's steps along the way.
It's not that it's wrong in text, it's wrong because your interpretation keeps shifting.
There's different people that will apply facts differently, that's why there's checks and balances, that's why you're here to.
Okay.
Overrule the Commissioner.
Anything else?
Yeah, I just, I have sympathy with the Department of Buildings' problem with, you know, interpreting this definition because I agree that it's very broad and confusing. But I'm concerned about regulation of non-commercial signage and whether you're intruding too much into people's ability to express themselves or speak their thoughts. And I had, I think I had asked last time, are there different categories of non-commercial signage, so that I could just understand? Like there's nonprofit signage, there's educational signage, there's religious, there's, you know, governmental instruction signage and there's art, do you have like a listing of all the different kinds of non-commercial signage?
No, we do not keep lists or segregate, you know, non-commercial signs based on content like that. We have the court decision from a few years back with the cop shot case, where we were told by the court that we had to regulate non-commercial signage, the same as we regulate accessory signage. So if people want to put their opinion up there, they want to say this or that, they want to put the Bill of Rights up there, they want to put Gettysburg Address, it's got to comply with the surface area limitations, like any other non-commercial sign or accessory sign.
So then getting back to art, I mean, is there any way that you could see that the definition could be somehow altered so that it would not include regulation of that type of sign?
I really am not sure about that, I mean, the definition could be changed a lot of different ways, you know, we're not here to change the definition though, we're just here to apply the facts of it, could it be changed, could another agency be referred to in the zoning text that could maybe step in and help out, possibly, but that's not before us unfortunately.
Okay.
One question, Madam Chair.
Yeah, go ahead.
So going back to the three-pronged test that you set forth, it's in the disjunctive, right? So if any one of them is satisfied?
Right, any of those three, and the first one does not have any connection to the theater district, it's just any business.
Let's talk about that one, actually, you said it as a congratulatory sentiment for the patrons, what, what commercial enterprise wouldn't use Bravo? In other words, if you put Bravo on any commercial business, would it?
Yes.
Wouldn't, so Bravo is inherently advertising or accessory or something, it has an inherent nexus to any commercial?
It's being used to announce a congratulatory remark between the business and its customer, or customer or potential customer.
So you would say this is the type of word you could never put on, that you could never put in unlimited?
Any business, exactly. If everyone could, if this was allowed, if this was approved or allowed to go forward, every business right next to it could put a Bravo sign up, just like that, and in fact, they can make it 10 times bigger if they wanted, they could illuminate it, they could put one, make one yellow, blue, red, pink, purple, anywhere, residence districts, commercial districts, this is a slippery slope that we're talking about.
We're talking about businesses though, right?
Well, there's, there's businesses in residence districts as well.
Okay.
That's all.
Okay, any other questions? Thank you.
I've got just, oh, I wasn't sure if you were telling me to leave or. DOB's determination that Bravo is announcing and directing attention to the business or the theater district is completely reasonable. The objective standard of what is a sign is set forth in the definition of sign in the zoning resolution and under prong B, it must announce, direct attention, or advertise. Our conclusion that announce directs attention to the garage and/or the theater district is a reasonable application of this objective standard. And again, if someone's unclear, they can come file a ZRD-1. I just want to say, we understand that there is some dissatisfaction with the sign definition, no one really likes it, but this is about the application of it, we don't want you to take your anger out on us because you don't like the definition, okay? We don't like it that much either, but we're trying to do this reasonably and interpret it citywide, the same for everyone, to avoid drastic consequences that may come. So we've submitted examples of displays that would not be considered signs and these examples demonstrate that we don't consider all word signs automatically. So while there may be questions about other locations and there's unlimited hypotheticals, you really could just go on and on and on with the hypotheticals, none of these have been presented for us for review and just me up here, it's not the full, you know, senior staff and technical overview committee, so I can't really opine on them without proper context. Thus, we request that you deny the appeal. And I would like to note, a couple of comments that were stated by the appellant, with regard to 111 Varick, we'd like to remind everyone that Judge Rakauer decided against BSA in that case and it is on appeal. And interestingly, the applicant's law firm, Reed Frank, is arguing that art displays an advertising sign, they're taking the exact opposite position that they're taking here, which we think is kind of interesting. And we just wanted to clarify that, the issue isn't who creates the image, but whether it is a sign under zoning, whether it's a real artist or, that is not material to whether or not it needs a definition of a sign.
Just a quick clarification on the Varick Street appeal, I mean, I've read the Judge Rakauer's decisions, two of them, and it isn't clear in either of them that she's rejecting the board's framework for deciding this, I think she just thinks the application of the facts to that framework is what she disagrees with. So, but you can put that in your last submission, how you think, if you do think that she's rejected the board's reasonable nexus test, then we would like to hear about that.
Okay.
The other thing I'd like you to just write up in your, in your submission is you're concerned about absurd results, so, so are we, right? And the absurd results we're seeing now are that you're regulating absolutely everything that can be seen as a sign. So what would be the absurd result if we, for example, were to say that unless there is, unless the, the text refers to something other than itself, it's, it's not a sign? So what would be the absurd result of that? If you could write that up, because I'm thinking that, as we discussed in the earlier hearing, it's not that there's going to be a run on putting up kind of effectively nonsense words on buildings, this sign probably is going to cost over a million dollars to install, maybe even two. And it's not really a sign, is it, it's part of the architectural, it's, it's actually structure that's being installed, it's a very expensive installation. So it's kind of hard to imagine that people are going to run out and try to put up the word chair or, you know, have a nice day in gigantic letters on the side of their building, it's going to cost them a lot of money, wouldn't it be better to put up the words eat at Joe's Pizza in front of Joe's Pizza? So if you could just talk about the absurd results, that would be useful in your next submission.
Sure.
Okay. Are there any speakers on this item? Okay, thank you.
Is that scheduled?
No speakers, okay. Too bad. Okay, so I think we can close this, but have these submissions. Oops. You want to, did you want to speak? Sure.
First, I just want to address the comment made about my firm. And I think, and I appreciate counsel's remarks, because in that case, the firm took the position on behalf of a client that a particular display was an advertising sign based on particular, very particular facts. The board disagreed, the court thought those facts were quite relevant, but the point that we've been making is that the standards, the general standards set forth by the board in that case are relevant here. And I think what DOB has suggested is that there is a standard here, or there is a text here in the zoning resolution which is very, very broad and with respect to which there is no guidance. And I think the fact of the matter is that this board has in fact provided that guidance in the Varick Street case, and I actually don't think it's a narrowing, I think it's actually a reasonable interpretation of the text that gives meaning to each prong of the definition in a way that doesn't do what DOB is doing, which is to collapse the A-prong, which says that a sign has writing, but also says in the B-prong that it must announce, direct attention to, or advertise. So I think the Varick Street case is highly relevant, provides a very important form of guidance for the decision of this, of this case. And the second thing I think is simply that the board in the case also said that the nexus has to be reasonable. And I don't think that in any respect, DOB has shown that there was a reasonable nexus between the display of the word Bravo and a commercial transaction or any of the, or the theater district or any other many things that it says it somehow has a nexus to. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, so actually, Mr. Karnofsky, because you have to submit something, right? I just. I just, so, we could put this on for a decision, I guess, on March 24th?
We need some time for submissions and reviewing.
The submission...
So let's do two.
Okay, so, two weeks for submission?
For him.
Okay, two weeks for submission for Mr. Karnowski, right? Is that good? So March 10th, then, that one?
Oh, March 17th for David, right?
Oh, so March 17th?
Yeah.
Okay.
And then DOB...
And then DOB the 31st?
Yeah, and then...
Okay, then DOB the 31st?
Then one week.
And then only one week?
One week for David to respond.
And one week for David, that puts you at, really, the 7th of April?
And then we could decide it on the...
Yeah, and then we could decide on the 21st.
Okay.
Only one week, yeah, okay. And then decide on the 21st of April. Okay, thank you. Motion to close? Oh, motion to close? Chair Promoter?
Aye.
Vice Chair Hinkson?
Aye.
Commissioner Montanez?
Aye.
Commissioner O'Leary Brown?
Aye.
Thank you. Decision items, item number three, 15314A. Do the motion to reopen?
Yeah.
Good morning, Todd Dale for the applicant.
Chair, um, well, Chair Promoter?
Aye.
Vice Chair Hinkson?
Aye.
Commissioner Montanez?
Aye.
Commissioner O'Leary Brown?
Aye.
Good morning, Todd Dale for the applicant.
So you heard the comments, we still have an open issue from DOT about information about turning radii and saw our number of vehicles?
And we would say that it's extremely unfair to the property owner to reopen this case and not continue with the decision as scheduled. With respect to the Department of Transportation, this case was filed in June 2014. Department of Transportation first made its responses after repeated efforts to contact Department of Transportation, both by board staff and our office, in December 2014, six months later. Those responses were done via email and not a letter into the record. Those questions that came to us in the letter, we answered, and we respond to these concerns. And in an email correspondence, the issues that were raised in the Department of Transportation's letter from February 10th, we spoke to the fact that this was not a site that was open yet, that some of the information that they were requiring was not available. Just for information purposes, they also asked questions like, you know, how many parking spaces were available when they were clearly shown on the plan, and we clarified that for Department of Transportation. This case was then closed in February 10th, and their official letter that came in was after this hearing had been closed and set for decision. With respect to the questions that were raised here by the Department of Transportation, we would say that those are not on point as to the issues that are being decided for this particular case. In this instance, the board, as the lead agency, refers to the Department of Transportation, these applications for an advisory opinion was specifically asking questions with respect to the street plan and intent to open. Department of Transportation through this eight-month, nine-month series has never said that there's any issues and there's no questions regarding the opening of Cambridge. In this recent letter when they came back, first of all, it's very presumptive to say that they deny the application when they don't have the authority to deny the application, that's the board's authority. Further, the questions they're asking about, like turning radius, and they have concerns about the access for emergency vehicles, the fire department, who I would state, has a little bit more experience in dealing with access of emergency vehicles, had no issues with this application, and said that provided we provided the no parking signs as requested and amend the plans and submit that to the record, that the fire department will be satisfied. So in this instance, the fact that the Department of Transportation, first of all, took six months to even communicate, took eight months to actually put something into the record, and is now asking questions that are not on point with the issues that are at hand, is very frustrating, and we don't believe that it's necessary to extend this any further, delay the property owner any further in any potential construction. And the Department of Transportation should simply, in an advisory capacity, answer whether Cambridge is intended to be open, and I think that through their communication, they've expressed no issues that this is, this site's going to be open. So we would respectfully request that this matter be closed and decided as previously scheduled at the last hearing.
So my understanding, though, is DOT did actually not make a statement about whether there's any intention to open Cambridge, it's actually not on their letter, and that, so they withheld that determination pending receipt of additional information. So what if we were to do this? Because it's not that we can just ignore another agency's advice when they're specialists in the subject of traffic.
Actually, as lead agency, the board has full right to make this decision.
We have the right, but we don't ignore the advice of agencies who are specialists in disciplines where we don't have specialists.
Actually, 3214A, Forest Avenue, the Department of Transportation asked for information that the board found was not necessary to decide the application. There's other applications that we have where the Department of Transportation has recommended a turnaround, and the board has decided that it's not relevant to an application. So there are definitely cases of this type that the board has decided, where Department of Transportation has made a recommendation, and the ESA, as lead agency, has said, this is not relevant, we're going to decide this application.
Well, so, how about this?
So he can submit on that, and we can take those cases into consideration, or you can try to respond to what DOT has asked for, and ask DOT to opine on whether the Cambridge Street is within the capital plan.
Right.
We don't have that information, this board's not going to vote without it. That, that's the one thing we have to have from DOT, we don't necessarily have to agree with them in every respect, although I think we defer to them in many respects.
Understood.
But that item of information, we have to have. So when we didn't get it in their submission, then we couldn't decide this.
And my question is, how has it taken the Department of Transportation nine months to answer this particular question? And why is it fair to punish this property owner due to the fact that the Department of Transportation is not answering an efficient...
So we can reach out to DOT and try to expedite this?
So we should set a decision for Christmas? Based on their current added response?
We can, we can reach out to DOT and try to expedite this, okay?
I, understood.
We'll try to expedite this, but we don't have the authority to vote if they haven't ruled on whether Cambridge is going to be...
I would respectfully say that you do have the authority to vote, you're choosing not to, which is a different situation. In this instance, if we can set the decision for the March 17th...
We don't.
We could.
Actually, you could, yes.
We could, but we never do.
We need to understand whether the street's going to be open. This board has asked for that information in every GCL case in the past 20 years.
Okay, then fine. If we are to defer this decision, I would respectfully request that it be set as a final decision date, and if the Department of Transportation does not respond, considering they've had such a long time to respond, it's just, you know, as we enter summer and it's construction season, and the school is very much interested in proceeding with this project, to have another month delay, or six weeks delay, or eight weeks delay, is very costly, and it's very punitive to the property owner to have to wait for an agency that's had nine, 10 months to respond to a very simple question. And, you know, you can sense my frustration, you can also understand what property owner is frustrated, because I'm expressing their frustration.
Just a question, though, have you reached out to DOT during this process?
Myriad times. The project manager, Ms. Mathias, helped facilitate an email conversation or discussion where they asked questions, as I said, some of their questions were like, you need to provide information on how many parking spaces. Well, it was very clearly shown on the plan, how many parking spaces are there. So the level of questions that were directed to us made us question how much Department of Transportation actually reviewed the application. That said, we did respond via email in December to these questions. And then, in January 6th, we made a submission where we did alter the site plan to show the curb cut, not on Auburn, but on the street to the north, in response to some of the questions raised by the Department of Transportation. And at that time, after we had had the email correspondence, and we had made this submission in January 6th, for five, six weeks, there was no expectation or reasonable expectation that Department of Transportation would continue to raise some of these issues. So, you know, this is our frustration, that we get a letter after the closing of the hearing at the last appearance, February 10th, and the fact that there's still issues being, you know, concern of the Department of Transportation. It's just very frustrating, the time that we've had to wait here.
How about this? We'll reach out, and if necessary, we'll reach out at higher levels to DOT, right?
That would be appreciated.
And we'll try to wrap this up within 30 days, how about that? Because I can't say that we can do it faster than that. Okay, but please submit the materials that they need. So at least we're responsive to their questions.
And our response would be, according to what we said in the email correspondence, the questions that we're asking, they're asking for information that's just not available this time, because it's not. We can put a letter in the record saying that this is not available, we can put a letter saying that the fire department approved this particular turnaround as the large vehicles...
Just a question, they're asking how many buses, isn't that something you can easily calculate based on school operation?
I would say potentially we could do an estimate, but also, that's not a question that's normally asked in a GCL application. This is not under secret review, this is not a variance application, this use is as-of-right, there's a site that's already there with a school. The question before the Department of Transportation to review in this application is, will Cambridge be opened as a part of the capital plan? That's the question that should be asked.
So I'm confused, if the questions are easily answered, why not just answer them?
Because we did an email, and then if we answer, we can easily put in a letter reflecting it was already circulated through this email correspondence, saying that the information the Department of Transportation is requesting is not fully available at this time because the school is not yet open.
No, but we estimate that there will be this many buses, how hard is that to calculate? We have this many students, this many students are going to be arriving by bus, it's just an estimate.
I would say two levels. One, sure, we could put potentially an estimate or respond that a lot of this information is available, but we'd also say that these questions being asked are not on point for this particular application. That's not what this application is, this application's not a variance, it's not a use variance.
It seems to me, if you want to expedite the process, you answer the questions, and then DOT is more prone to just be responsive, as opposed to them saying, we keep asking them for information, they don't give it to us.
If we restrict Department of Transportation to the review that they should be having these type of applications, maybe it wouldn't take them six to nine months to respond.
We could put it out for the 24th.
We'll put it out for the 24th, and we'll reach out, but I really would ask you, please, to be responsive to their questions. It seems like then you're just putting up a fight with DOT, and that won't go over well.
We will respond in kind as we have.
Right, just respond, don't say it's not available, estimate, there are this many kids, based on other school activity, we estimate this many buses. Something like that?
Yeah, I mean, we will reach out to them, my, but I think that the chair's point, and I would just remind you that with the new Vision Zero, DOT is taking a hard look at all schools, and it's really about school safety. So I think, you know, they may respond also to pre, like, an agreement to work with them after, after approval, we'll propose that to them, and I know, I'm sure your client would be amenable to that, they want this to be safe as well. So we'll propose that to them, but I think they're going to push back on that. We'll be in touch.
That's fine. We'll provide the general information as best available for a site that's not open yet, and we'll echo what we included in these December emails, which we thought Department of Transportation had more than enough time to respond to.
But they're asking for turning radii, something that the site planner has to do...
It's on the site plan.
Okay, it's on the site plan, but they said...
It's, it's...
Diagrams of turning movements for the buses and trucks that proposed to enter.
We have the turnaround shown with the radius shown, as far as the width is, I believe it's 35 feet.
But that's not a diagram of the turning movements.
So the Department of Transportation wants us to draw a little bus?
I think so, because that's what they often ask you to do. So that's how you diagram that the bus can make the tight turns, because what they're probably saying is the turns look too tight. And that's not unreasonable.
And the fire department, which is going to have much larger vehicles accessing the site, had no issues.
Fire department can run right across that little greenaway if it needs to, right? There's a little rabbit out there.
Much larger vehicles. And Department of Transportation is saying that they have concerns about emergency vehicles, and yet the fire department doesn't have concerns. It just leads question to how much the Department of Transportation is actually looking at these applications.
Okay. I don't think you should be having an argument with the Department of Transportation if you want to get this approved. So here's the deal, put together this material, just answer it, it's not that hard, just answer the information, provide it to us immediately, we will get it to DOT, we will reach out to the higher levels of DOT and get this reviewed, okay?
Fair enough.
So we can put this on for a decision, maybe the, what are we up to? You think, maybe the 31st would be more...
Just in case.
Just in case, the 31st, okay? Make the submission immediately.
Can we please do the 24th, as was originally discussed, it's two weeks, they've had more than enough time to respond, it shouldn't be an issue, we're going to be able to respond within a day or two to what was asked.
I think it would be safe, what?
We can always defer.
We can always defer, we'll have to defer if we don't have it. I mean, I just said it, I didn't think we could get an answer faster than 30 days, and that's more than, faster than 30 days.
And yet, they've had nine months.
Right, but this, we're talking about 30 days to respond to this question, right? And the question was asked on February 10th, so we've had a month that you didn't do anything, and we should have done something.
The question was originally asked in December, and they didn't get back until after the hearing when they well knew it was scheduled.
Right, but February 10th, the question came up, right? So if we'd been working on this since February 10th, we might have had an answer by now.
And we did not realize it was going to be an issue when the letter was submitted in February 10th, no one communicated to us that it was...
The February 10th letter didn't have the most important information, which is whether the street will be open. So at that point, we should have known there was a problem.
Right, and why didn't someone from the board reach out after February 10th if that was going to be in check?
You know what the letters look like, you do these all the time. I think 3/24, we'll work.
Okay, and then we'll defer if we have to. Okay, so the submission, you need to make the submission by Friday if you want to...
That's fine, we can definitely submit by Friday.
So we have to close it again.
Yeah, okay. Are there any speakers on this? Or motion to close? Chair Promoter?
Aye.
Vice Chair Hinkson?
Aye.
Commissioner Montanez?
Aye.
Commissioner O'Leary Brown?
Aye.
Thank you.
Okay, continued hearing item, item number four, 24512A, 515 East Fifth Street, Manhattan.
Morning, Madam Chair Commissioners, Marvin Mixner, the applicant.
Good morning. We did find your ZRD-1s, they were submitted improperly, so, you know, kind of the old adage, it's got to go through submit, or we don't get it. If it just goes as an email to somebody in the agency, it doesn't end up being viewed by the commissioners. So there's no excuse for that, that's just the way it's done. So therefore, we haven't, we didn't see it until we mentioned it yesterday, and then we managed to find it. So, but it was never formally submitted. But anyway, now we have it, and we see that you did submit the ZRD-1 and the plans to DOT, and that's helpful, thank you. And now proceed. But we didn't receive the sprinkler drawings.
Well, the ZRD-1 is not particularly relevant at this point, because we've since had discussions with the Borough Commissioner's Office, as well as the General Counsel's Office, and they have told us that we could file the demolition applications as we had indicated, and in fact, those applications were filed. The only caveat they gave us was they wanted each application to reference the other one, which we did, and that's been under review. As a matter of fact, as of yesterday, we received some objections, and this is something I mentioned to the board months ago about my concern as to how quickly we can get our DOT, because we had many issues on East Sixth Street. We just got a notice of objection, which I can hand to the board. And essentially, what this plan examiner is suggesting is that we get, we go through approval of the constructed building before they'll allow us to demolish.
So any three copies?
I have a few more, okay?
Yeah. Goes through approval of the building in what particular way?
We have an existing alteration application for the enlargement.
Right.
Right, there's no C of O for the building, so they're asking us to go, complete the alteration application, get a C of O, and then demolish the penthouse.
Okay, so that, um...
If I, if I can interpret it that way, but, you know, this is, this is unfortunately, has been my concern all along. We intend, obviously, to discuss this further with DOT, but I know at a prior hearing, the chair offered, offered the board's assistance in trying to get the demo permit approved, and I would now ask the board to, consistent with that commitment, to reach out to DOT and see if this can, this matter can be handled that way. But we're waiting for...
But it's not just simply that they want to review the plans, it's that they're, I haven't been able to read this, but you're thinking that they want you to complete out to C of O, which is a physical impossibility?
That's right.
It's kind of a existential impossibility.
I'm not sure it actually says that. Maybe I can interpret.
Okay, perhaps you can better than I have.
It seems to me that, that he just simply flagged that there's an Alt 1 out on this and, and there just should be coordination between your Alt 1 application and your demolition application. He's asking that you just provide the drawings for the Alt 1 and provide that in your set for the demolition so that they can just make sure that, you know, you haven't made any changes to the Alt 1. That's what it reads to me like. So I'm not exactly sure that they're asking you to get a CO. That, when he says which requires obtaining a CO, I think it just means that once you get through the process, you're going to get your CO.
Well, I also did speak to the expediter who obtained that objection, and he was also concerned that the examiner is missing, perhaps may misunderstanding the application, but has required us to do more work in connection with the Alt before they'll demolish, authorize demolition. So, you know, it's, whatever it says and whatever it means and whatever the examiner intended, I would just like to get past this and, and get the permit.
Okay. We will reach out.
Go to the Borough Commissioner.
Seems like a short meeting between the Borough Commissioner and the Plan Examiner would resolve this entirely since Borough Commissioner authorized the scope of work. Plan Examiner may not have been aware that this is something that the Borough Commissioner has been doing for months.
It doesn't seem like it's a huge mountain to overcome. I'd just get a hold of it.
We just received this just the other day, so that's why I'm bringing it.
I mean, I think what he's referring to there is that this is, what you're proposing to do, which is to change the unit count, is an alteration type one and you filed it as a type two. So that's what's confusing at the outset. So, and like, why are you filing it as a type two? There's this open alteration type one out there. Why aren't you just put this under the same application? That's why.
Well, but there's really no unit count change. So in that respect, he's, he's wrong. It's another issue.
Well, it's rearranging the units and all that sort of stuff. So there is actually a unit count. You have medical offices where you used to have units.
It's, it's, it's not different from the Alt application. The Alt application shows medical offices. The demolition application also shows that.
Yeah, I think it's just coordination. I'd go directly to the B.C. because the B.C. has already seen this, right?
Yes, he has.
So just simply...
I may be doing that today, but I appreciate the board's help.
Okay, but we definitely... Okay, great. Are there any other questions?
There was, there was also some discussion about unit count. I hope you've clarified that because...
Yeah, I don't, I guess one of my questions was that, then this was something that opposition raised about the unit count. And so there are 17 units, but one of them is oddly a duplex that has two living rooms. That might just be a mistake in how the plans are.
It's a mistake in designation, but it's still one, a single unit.
Okay. And, okay. Okay, we still need the sprinkler plans?
We've asked the expediter and architect to, to find it. This was approved 10 years ago, so I, I guess, I don't know. We've asked for it. We haven't...
The sprinklers were installed pursuant to plans, right?
Yes.
So they must exist at the Buildings Department, right?
We've asked and we're still waiting.
Was the sprinkler signed off? Inspected and signed off?
I presume it was.
Did you find out?
Yeah.
It wasn't that long ago. We have sprinkler inspection report, but we don't know what that's an inspection report for.
Well, those are the recent sprinkler inspection reports.
Right, but it could be for two sprinkler heads as opposed to for a building's worth of sprinkler heads. Because it doesn't tell you the scope of the inspection, right? So I would have to say that if the sprinkler drawings can't be found, they need to be created. We have to know that the building is sprinkler.
Well, we'll follow up on that as we have.
Okay. Okay. Okay, are there any speakers? Yes.
Stating names in the record?
Morning. Daniel Bernstein of Arnold and Porter. On behalf of the Tenants Association of 515 East Fifth Street, we're still waiting for a number of things, one of which is the sprinkler plans, which we would very much like to see. We're also still waiting for an explanation of how the new plans comply with Section 2821 of the zoning resolution. The plans submitted back in November show four new 300 square foot apartments on the sixth floor, which means that they're 25% smaller than the zoning requires. Back at the November 25th hearing, the chair expressly asked Owners Council to address this issue and he's failed to do so. So we would urge the board not to implicitly grant any additional zoning variances. If the zoning variance is appropriate here, the board should explicitly say so. So we'd like an explanation about the apartment size issue. We're also, as we've mentioned, concerned about the density of the building, the number of units, and the fact that there are not medical facilities, not, not use group four facilities, but rather commercial facilities on the first floor of the building. So we just want to clear up that confusion. The facilities there are not medical facilities.
What are they?
It's a commercial spa. We would appreciate an explanation as to how and under what theory that commercial facility qualifies as a medical facility. We think that's relevant. We just remind the board that the purpose of the MDL is to mitigate issues of overcrowding. So on this MDL waiver application, these density issues certainly should be taken into account. Finally, we look forward to seeing the DOB objection sheet. We do think the DOB needs to thoroughly review the plans and raise objections so we can know what issues we're dealing with before the application is approved. And we, in closing, just reiterate our request that this be taken off the calendar until all of the zoning issues are resolved. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other speakers? Mr. Mixner? Can you speak to a couple of those points? What about the spa?
I don't know of any spa on the ground. I really don't. This is news to me.
Can you find out because it's supposed to be ambulatory care facility?
Yes, I will. I don't know that this is...
Okay.
First, I've heard of it.
Okay, and also can you indeed speak to, because without checking it independently, the compliance with the section of the zoning resolution?
Yes, I believe we did an hour, an hour submission.
Sorry?
I believe we did an hour submission.
What did, I mean, I know that you talked about the, the unit count.
Right.
But the minimum size of units.
It's, it's a pre-existing non-compliant condition, which we're not increasing.
The minimum size of units?
Yes.
But you're creating new units.
But it's the same unit count. It's the same number of units.
Unit count, but the minimum size of units.
Right, well, if you look at what the building was compliant, what the building complied with or non-complied with, as I said, under the I-cards, there were 17 undersized units.
Right.
Right? Now, this building, we've eliminated a number of undersized units by combining them both in duplexes, so there is no increase in the degree of non-compliance, actually a decrease.
Okay.
Now, okay. I just want to clarify or at least advise the board that, that the opposition gets up every, every time this hearing is on and talks about a tenant association. I don't know that there is a tenant association other than one person. And I think the vast majority of tenants in this building are perfectly satisfied with the conditions as well as the landlord. I just want to clarify that for the board.
Okay, thank you.
Secondly, I'd like this hearing to be closed with decision deferred, as the other case has been deferred, and hopefully we can get DOB to grant demolition permit. And then upon completion of the penthouse, then we can have the board decide both cases.
Okay, okay. We're prepared to do that, except you do need to answer Gravity East Village, the spa located in 515 East Fifth Street. Doesn't sound like a...
Apartment 1A.
What's it called? What's it called?
Gravity. Sounds nice.
We will identify for the board what the nature of that occupancy is.
Says right there on the website.
What is it?
It looks interesting.
Okay.
Okay, so that, we need that submission, but we can, we can close the hearing and obviously the continued submissions and deferred decision.
Okay, thank you.
So for a motion to close?
Chair Promoter?
Aye.
Vice Chair Higson?
Aye.
Commissioner Montanez?
Aye.
Commissioner Oatley Brown?
Aye.
Okay, thank you very much. And...
Oh, well, the submission, it's kind, we're, we're deferring decisions, so the submission on the question of the spa should be immediately. So I...
Okay, fine. We can get, we can get the submission in another week.
And his explanation of the zoning issue and density.
Right.
Yes, okay.
Unit size.
So if you could submit the answers to the question about the zoning, the density question, it's not really density. It's the minimum size of units question and the, the occupancy on the first floor. I mean, was there originally a mom and pop on the first floor? I know there was one store. I have an I-card here, but it's...
There was, there was a retail establishment, I believe.
Yeah. So there, so there was one kind of mom and pop on the first floor even on the I-card. So then that would count for part of it, but there were all of it.
As long as it was still granted.
Yeah, right, assuming that it's been a continuing use.
Just recall, just for the board, as you call that originally...
Not to a PCE. They can't convert it to a PCE.
Good point.
So it's immaterial, actually.
Right, that's a very good point.
Just add that to the application.
What's that? I'm sorry, I didn't...
If it's a spa, it needs to come in for physical, cultural stuff.
Understood, but I don't, I don't know what the nature of the occupancy is.
Right.
I still don't know about it because...
Oh, and true, it might not be able to come in because what's the zoning district?
Yeah, I don't think it's, yeah, no, it's a residence.
No, no, it's not, it's not a special permit. Not a special permit.
No, no, no.
But that's all right. Just, 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 just to clarify, just to clarify for the board, originally this building had residences and retail. And under the old zoning, the enlargement was created by putting community facility space on the first floor to get the extra floor area. We're removing the penthouse, so we no longer need that relationship.
So then you would amend the drawings to show it as commercial grandfathered, assuming you haven't abandoned, but you may have, the commercial use, right?
Through the PCE.
So, but the PCE thing, that's a bigger problem. A spa would not fit under those commercial uses unless it's not really a spa, unless it's not...
I don't know that it is a spa and...
They're fixing eyebrows. There is no massages going on.
Looking like a spa.
It looks like a spa?
They cut hair.
Can you give me the website on that?
It's, find it on SpaFinder.com.
SpaFinder.
It's the first one that came up, actually.
Is that right?
I'll do the address. Yeah, I was right.
You learn something new every day.
SpaFinder? Seriously?
He also wants to give us the sprinkler plans.
So it's getting even more interesting, your case, which...
As if it hasn't been interesting enough.
Exactly.
And you have to give us the sprinkler plans and...
Yes, so we would like that submission to give you motivation. We'd like that on the 24th. What?
I'm going to upload, but can he just submit that formally?
Yes, to submit those materials formally, that the ZRD one and the drawings to DOB, because that never went through the submit process. And so submit this, these new materials on March 24th. Is that okay?
Yeah, let's put the hearing or the decision date for two months from now.
Okay. And so we could put the first attempt at a decision on May 12?
Does opposition get a date?
No.
Sure.
The tenants had an opportunity to...
Yeah, yeah, sure. But so, so the submission is March 24th, so tenants have, can submit April 14th.
To review what? I'm just submitting plans.
You're just submitting what you're submitting. No, you're submitting a response to the zoning size of the rooms, the depth of the units, the spa story, how you're going to resolve that, and...
Sprinkler plans.
Sprinkler plans.
Sprinkler plans, right.
And we'd also like...
And sign offs, right? You want to know the sprinkler plans, sign offs?
No, we have sprinklers plans, sign offs?
That they've been inspected.
We have inspections...
You have inspections, I think.
Well, we don't know what they're for. We don't know what's been inspected.
Right. But if you're looking for the plans, presumably if, if those plans have been signed off, the project got signed off, you need to just make sure that we have some documentation that it says signed off on this or whatever.
Right.
Oh, so that would actually even be on this that would show the sprinklers have been signed off. Right, okay. Right, so you could just go on this to show that they've been signed off. Okay, so did we already close this?
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay, and the hearing date was again, I'm sorry, ma'am.
Hearing date was May 12.
Decision date was May 12?
Yeah.
For both cases?
For both cases, hoping that all is done.
Okay, that's true. Thank you.
You want to call it out or turn, or you want to...
The variance.
Yeah, we can call it out.
Item number six, 26613BZ.
So this one, we were deferring and so we could put this on for decision on May 12?
May 12. Okay. Thank you very much.
New cases, item number five, 12614A. Sorry. 3153 Richmond Terrace, Staten Island.
Good morning. Todd Dale for the applicant. From review session, I know that there were questions raised. Just to start, DEP submitted a letter of no objection yesterday, I believe. I don't know if it's in the record yet, but March 2nd. So we had resolved, there were some confusions over the survey, but they've been resolved. So they did submit their letter.
Okay, I can... Okay.
We can make sure that it's in the record.
We have a, we have a sign off from DEP now.
Correct. And then...
Fire Department signed off.
Correct.
Right, and DOT in January sent some stuff.
They did send some stuff. Just to clarify, we were, we have a plan prepared. I actually have a copy of it showing large trucks moving into the site. We'll submit that to the record. We had held that off because as a rule, we generally try and respond to all the agencies at once to limit how many submissions the board has to read. But since the DEP and FDNY have submitted their letters, we'll get that letter in within, or excuse me, that new plan within a day or two days, addressing their concerns. I know there was also a question. We reviewed the zoning form. We'll send in a corrected zoning analysis. There was an issue with the zoning analysis that was submitted. I believe it was just for one of the buildings as opposed to the lot as a whole. We'll put this in the record, but just to clarify, the figures, the new warehouse is proposed to be 7,500 square feet, corresponding to the previous action under 19113A. The total floor area is, I believe, approximately 31, or excuse me, 33,000 square feet, which is an FAR of .085, I think, or .089. But we'll get that new zoning analysis. And also in the proposed parking, the number of spaces proposed are 68, which again corresponds to the previous decision. The zoning analysis on record, I think, has an incorrect figure, but...
So the prior resolution though, had, the resolution states with that three-story building that was previously granted, the total F, floor area would be 33,506.
Correct.
So how does that coordinate with this additional, whatever, 7,000 square feet?
Correct.
It doesn't seem to make sense.
The total floor area, the other building was actually an alteration, a portion of that building was to be retained. The figure provided by the architect tells me, I think it's at the, let me get the figures. The remaining of the office building to remain was approximately 9,000 square feet. The new office building to be constructed under the previous resolution was approximately 15,000 square feet. And this building is, is I believe 7,500 square feet. So I think that that totals to near the 33,000 total. But we, we looked at the figures and they do match up. So this new building is 7,500 square feet. The prior office building with existing and what was granted as part of the approval, it's approximately 25,000 square feet.
So then the resolution was not correct?
We'll double check, but I think the figure is correct, the 33,000 total. Because that 33,000 is for the whole zoning lot. It's...
Right, well, you're giving us figures for the whole zoning lot.
Correct.
So it's actually going down from the prior resolution?
I don't know if it's going down, but we'll double check. It's, it's right around the 33,000 square feet figure.
All right.
For, for everything else. We'll make sure that the math, but it's two buildings.
Are you demolishing an existing warehouse?
Uh, no, I think that there may be a shed that being moved, but this is going to be a new warehouse. For the old office building, a portion was demolished, a portion was retained.
Okay, but I would think that from the prior resolution, when we had 33,000 square feet, that the majority of what you're building now would be an increase.
I believe that under the prior resolution, because the plan was for the warehouse, originally when this was filed, we were going to file these as two joint applications. However, because of the issue that happened, DEC was involved with approvals. Part of the reason that these buildings are located so close to Richmond Terrace is because DEC required them to be away from the water. So they originally were going to be filed as one joint application. Then DEC expressed concerns over the warehouse. In order to proceed with the office building, they were separated and the office building application went forward under the 191138 calendar number. So you're correct. Would that figure at the time of the resolution, that 33,000 actually probably should have been reduced to like 26,000 because the warehouse was not...
Was not part of that.
Was not part of that. And I think that that fell through the cracks because of the confusing nature of the...
That would make sense.
Yeah, that's why.
So you'll coordinate all the different places where the word floor area shows up.
100%. We'll get the new zoning analysis and we'll include either revising the letter or the statement to break it down by each building. So it's clear that this is the warehouse, this is the office, and this is the total. So it's clear that this is the warehouse, this is the office, and this is the total.
And similarly, your zoning analysis lists one parking space.
Again, I said that that was an error. That was definitely an error with the zoning analysis. It's 68, 68 spaces for sure. 49 are required. And I think it's 68 is the total that was reflected in the previous application.
It was 68, yeah, 68 for in 191. And I had that question too, was it, what didn't really make sense to me whether or not you were saying 68 covered both buildings? Or whether you needed 68 for this particular application, the new building? And so then I was thinking, wait a minute. He either needs like 100 and change, or, you know, you were covering both buildings. And it wasn't clear.
Right, understood. We agree it's 68 spaces for the entire zoning lot, which covers both buildings together.
All right.
And other than that, I don't know if there are any other questions.
Yeah, there was a question about the location. So you have a statement in your statement of facts that says the other buildings on Richmond Terrace were also built in the bed of the map street. But other than this office building that you know about, because that was an application, how do you know those other buildings were built in the bed of the street? Is it just from observation? Or do you have some sort of survey that shows that?
I think it was the photographic survey. We didn't have a survey all along Richmond Terrace, but I think the original application provided a photo showing.
It's a photo, but like, how do you know where the street widening is in a photo?
It was just a visual as far as being right on Richmond Terrace.
So you're kind of visualizing the continuation of the road without really knowing.
Of the widening, correct.
But so, and from that visual, without also really knowing, all of those other buildings look like storage sheds as opposed to large buildings in the bed. And the office building is set back. So it's only a little corner of it really is within the bed. So I'm just curious, unless it's that we don't have enough information, but I'm just curious why this warehouse is set so far forward.
Two things I will say. First, because of DEC not wanting the building to extend closer to the water, they requested it to be moved closer to the edge of currently paved Richmond Terrace. Second, the office building is actually in the bed of the street to the same extent. I don't know if it's unclear from the plans, but if you look at the office building, it's actually two levels. There's an existing one-story and then the upper story, the third-floor terrace. And where it says on the plan, existing story, one-story brick, that's actually even closer to Richmond Terrace and further into mapped Richmond Terrace than the warehouse. So it's, 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 it's to less of an extent than the previously approved office building.
Maybe that just wasn't clear in what I was.
I think it's because the plan may appear a little confusing because it's a two-level office building. And there's actually like a hyphenated line trying to designate the difference between the stories. But that existing one-story brick actually extends right up to the paved edge of Richmond Terrace.
Maybe that's the problem, that I can't see the.
Well, it might be helpful to explain what all of these buildings are instead of just giving us an aerial photo. You know, it's a three-story structure. How far is it into the bed of the map street?
Yeah.
Something like that.
Like, that's true, that the site plan doesn't tell you how far it is into the bed of the street. It tells you the width and depth of the building, but it's just sort of, oh, it tells you it's 14 foot, eight inches from the curve, from the property line. But it doesn't tell you how far into the bed it is. So, and then ditto for the office building. I don't even know.
I mean, we can take a look and try and clarify, I mean, the office building compared to the warehouse, but, I mean, to any extent, this, you know, proposal represents, you know, the owner trying to develop privately owned land. And as I said, it's pushed forward because of the DEC approvals connected with the.
Okay, so maybe you could explain that. So I see the basin. So DEP said move it back X feet, so it's at least, for instance, the office building is dimensioned on the, on the plan, is showing as being 51 foot, eight inches from the basin.
From the existing bulkhead, correct?
From the bulkhead, yeah.
Right.
So it's not described as a bulkhead over there, but yeah, so assuming that's a bulkhead, that distance is much greater with the warehouse. The reason that I'm asking is mostly, so DOT issues that letter that says, okay, we don't have current plans to widen this, but we might, and in the future that would require a condemnation of the property, so just be forewarned, right? And noticing that those other buildings are, where are storage sheds or something like that? That's not a big deal in terms of relocating them. But here you have this large building that would have to be destroyed effectively, right? So why would your client wanna pull it so far forward if it had an option? So if EDC is saying, no, you don't have an option, it's gotta be X feet back, that's a different thing. But it allowed it to be only 52 feet back on the other side.
I would say in response to that, first of all, I mean, it's private property and they're choosing to develop the private property the way they wish, that the city has the right to eminent domain regardless of whether it's mapped or not. But also, in this particular instance, unlike with the previous application where there was no existing building and the office building was proposed, based on the previous approval, you know, of the board and the various agencies, that office building is already approved to be located within the, you know, mapped width of Richmond Terrace. So this warehouse is not extending the distance into Richmond Terrace because that building is already existing on the same zoning lot. So, I mean, we can provide, you know, I'll see if it's available, if we can get a DEC plan potentially and submit it to the record. But in this instance, what's being proposed is the same zoning lot with the same conditions that existed under the previous approval. And the extent of the warehouse incursion into Richmond Terrace, mapped Richmond Terrace is virtually the same as the office building that was previously approved.
Okay. Any other questions? Are there any speakers on this?
Oh, language about 7201.
Sorry, sorry. I can't hear you when I.
The language about 7201.
Oh, yes.
Sorry.
Our favorite.
Let's clear that up before it comes up.
I'll just, I'll just say that we're more than happy to adjust language as the board sees fit. As actually previously, I think it was reflected, it may have been reflected, I don't know if it was even in Cambridge, the application that came up. I don't know if that had a 7201G objection. But, but, you know, this is, this is language that was developed after discussion between the Department of Buildings and with Board Counsel. You know, the frustration that we had when it was just the Department of Buildings from Staten Island that was issuing these objections and saying that we needed to get the bulk waiver from the board. And the board's like, okay, what bulk waivers do we need? And we go back to Department of Buildings and they're like, well, we don't know, get it from the board. And we were in this ping pong situation between the two.
It's not like going back and forth to DOB. It's more like, here we are waiving bulk. So you just do a zoning analysis, it looks like the architect did a zoning analysis and said, we don't know, right? That nothing shows up as needing a bulk waiver. So if you're concerned that, what if we didn't think of something? We could say that in the, in the resolution, I suppose, we could say that though no specific bulk waivers were listed or something, to the extent that the location of the building within the bed creates a non-compliance, it's varied. We do that?
These GCL 35s always describe the grant as treating the zoning lot as though the map street were not there. Pursuant to 7201 sub-paragraph G, which gives the board authority to do that. That's all it does. It doesn't give the board any additional authority to waive any other non-compliances. And you don't have any as long as the street is not there theoretically under our grant.
Correct, correct.
And so in your statement, all you have to say is you're asking that the board invokes 7201G to do that, to treat the site as though the map street were not there. And that's it.
Okay. It's just a different.
And as far as.
Precise. And it's in the, it's, there's a recital that makes that very clear. It didn't used to contain that, the resos for these.
Correct.
GCL 35s, but DOB identified this issue and then they found this provision of zoning and they asked that there be some clarity on that. And we gave that to them.
And, you know, going forward, as I said, the language we include in our statements is, you know, general language. If in discussion with the board or the council, you want us to change that language, we're more than happy to going forward.
Like what he said just now.
That's fine. We'll change it, we'll do whatever it is, but that's, that's the history of it.
That's just to clarify, because otherwise, I feel like we're just sort of generally granting something with a wand and we don't know what it is that we've just created.
Understood.
Okay. Okay. Any other, anything, any speakers on this item? Okay. So we can close this, I think, right? Right?
You want to with all the stuff, with stuff going to DOT and?
Yeah, but we're just waiting for, if, again, if there's a problem, we can always reopen, but I don't think that there's. I don't expect a problem. We're just waiting for a DOT, right?
We're gonna submit a plan showing the vehicles entering the site in response to DOT's bullet point.
Right.
Item in their last letter and we'll submit a amended zoning analysis, which isn't to DOT, but just to the commissioner of questions.
And you'll just correct the language. You can give John a call if you need to.
Sure.
On that 7201.
More than happy.
And clarify the floor area and the zoning analysis? And show us something from the DEC regarding the plans?
I'll see what we've got from DEC, sure.
And so, so it's sort of, provide the DEC sort of citing criteria, right?
Okay.
If you can do that.
Okay. And then you wanted the, what the other buildings are and how far they are from the map street, do you still want that?
No, I understand how they, they came about. Okay.
Sure.
That's fine. Okay, great. So for, let's see, so we would have you, how long do you think you need for this?
We'll be able to submit in one or two weeks, what's ever easier for the board's schedule. Because we have the plan already, we have the zoning analysis already. It's just a matter of obtaining an easily submitted DEC thing and then discussing any 7201G language that needs to change. So depending, what's ever easier for the board, one week or two weeks for our submission and then corresponding decision date.
Okay, so do we think, two weeks?
DOT approval.
DOT, well, DOT already submitted the statement that it's not part of their capital plan.
Capital plan, it's just that they want that little thing.
They just wanted to understand the.
Trucks.
Trucks. The largest design commercial vehicle expected to access, which you'll provide them.
Sure. And just to clarify also, this site has been in operation for two decades and they're not expecting any change. It's a, I don't know if you're familiar, it's a tugboat company, so.
The Calister, yeah, I know. It's very cool.
Well, with the warehouse, aren't they like expanding?
I think the warehouse is just gonna be where they may have stored like repairs for the boats off-site. They're gonna bring them on-site. Trying to.
Okay.
Trying to tugboat along.
Okay, so could you submit, and we're, and we're trying a new regime of submission, so there's more time to review it. So if you could submit that on Friday, the, sorry, Thursday, the 19th of March, that's two weeks?
Sure.
Okay. For a hearing, or a decision hopefully on the 31st of March?
Okay.
Chair, oh, motion to close?
Motion to close.
Chair Perlmutter?
Aye.
Vice Chair Hinkson?
Aye.
Commissioner Montanez?
Aye.
Commissioner Oatley Brown?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Zoning calendar, decision items, item number seven, 32913BZ, 145 Gerard Street, Brooklyn.
How are you? I guess I could say good afternoon.
Not quite.
Almost. I got a chance to hear the review session yesterday. I understand everything was acceptable to board except one point, that was the BZ zoning analysis form showed the rear yard as compliant. Yesterday, I was able to get the submission in. I'm not sure if it was received. That reflects, that reflects that it in fact is not complying. So.
So we're good.
Cautiously optimistic that we were finished.
Okay, yes, so you responded to our one little question, thank you. So we can then make a motion to grant.
Chair Perlmutter?
Aye.
Vice Chair Hinkson?
Aye.
Commissioner Montanez?
Aye.
Commissioner Oatley Brown?
Aye. Thank you.
Thank you very much, have a good day.
Item number eight, 11814BZ, 1891 Richmond Road, Staten Island.
Good morning, Philip Bell Rampoula.
Morning.
You need a clarification on the financials?
Yes. Can we just open?
Get them in the hearing?
No, we could just hear this, right?
No.
Should we open? Okay, so for a motion to open.
Chair Perlmutter?
Aye.
Vice Chair Hinkson?
Aye.
Commissioner Montanez?
Aye.
Commissioner Oatley Brown?
Aye. I'm sorry. But I do note that there was a letter dated February 26th that I think addressed the issues and maybe we didn't see them because it was submitted kind of late. But said that there's no additional value ascribed to the attic storage since it's considered a customary amenity. That's what you were about to say?
Yes.
And then the other thing was it revised the statement of facts to acknowledge that there's actually no waiver required for the 40 feet to the ridge line.
Correct.
Because the bulk is determined by the board.
Correct. And the other thing was the increase in cost is $40,000 because we brought the two stairs up and the elevator and we put the sprinkler system in. So on pure math, it reduced the return on investment from 7.7 to 7.1.
Right, okay. Stairs plus. Stairs and the elevator.
Yes.
And sprinklers.
And sprinklers. Okay. Okay, so I think we're, we're good on this, thank you.
Okay.
Any speakers on this?
Oh, no, no, no. I guess you open.
Yeah, because I opened it. Okay, so for a motion to close?
Chair Perlmutter? Chair Perlmutter?
Aye.
Vice Chair Hinkson?
Aye.
Commissioner Montanez?
Aye.
Commissioner Oatley Brown?
Aye.
And for a motion to grant?
Chair Perlmutter?
Aye.
Vice Chair Hinkson?
Aye.
Commissioner Montanez?
Aye.
Commissioner Oatley Brown?
Aye.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Item number nine, 15414BZ, 69345MU, Brooklyn. Excuse me.
Richard Lobel of Sheldon Nobel PC for the applicant.
And we did receive, um, what was it?
Sanborn's, a survey.
And...
Vice Plan.
Yeah, yeah, okay, thank you for submitting.
A pleasure.
The vice plan showing they're gonna match the brick.
Correct.
Yes, good, thank you.
Because we make buildings look nice now.
Make it nice and pretty. Really good brick, not cheesy brick.
Not at all. And a matching masonry band.
Yeah, I noticed that, that was a nice trip.
Sure.
Okay, so... So for a motion to grant?
Chair Perlmutter?
Aye.
Vice Chair Hinkson?
Aye.
Commissioner Montanez?
Aye.
Commissioner Oatley Brown?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Item numbers 10, 17414BZ, 652662 Avenue of the Americas.
Anyone here for this?
No.
Okay, so for, I think we received, oh, we did receive a modification of the submission to show legalization.
Right, vice statement of facts, revised BZ form.
All that good stuff. Okay, so for a motion to grant?
Chair, oh no. Chair Perlmutter?
Aye.
Vice Chair Hinkson?
Aye.
Commissioner Montanez?
Aye.
Commissioner Oatley Brown?
Aye.
Item number 11, 23214BZ, 946 Pennsylvania Avenue, Brooklyn. Reopening this one?
So I think we have to reopen this, so for a motion to open.
Chair Perlmutter?
Aye.
Vice Chair Hinkson?
Aye.
Commissioner Montanez?
Aye.
Commissioner Oatley Brown?
Aye.
Good morning, Josh Ryan Smith for the applicant. Uh, as I had indicated in, uh, my last submission letter to the board, um, uh, this building, in fact, was not a pre-61 building, as I had originally believed, um, and so we are currently doing some additional research at the Department of Buildings, um, to clarify the notation on the certificate of occupancy that references an open parking area at another lot. Um, I believe, uh, through some research that I did on Accra's, that this open parking area is actually on a block diagonally, um, across Georgia Avenue, um, from the existing building, um, and that, that, uh, block and lot is currently used for parking, um, so I'm just going to get some additional records at the Department of Buildings to, to shed some clarity on this, uh, and then I will submit that in a written submission to the board.
Well, just a question, I mean, if this is accessory parking to these uses, wouldn't the landlord know that?
Uh, understood, um, but it's been difficult to get in touch with the landlord, um, as to...
Wouldn't there be a deed restriction or something? Yeah, there's...
There may be, I did some initial research on the block and lot for both our property as well as the open parking area, and I haven't been able to find anything yet.
You pay, the tenant is paying the rent, can't be that hard to get in touch with the landlord.
You'd be surprised.
Somebody who knows the history of the site, right?
Of course, but you have to remember, this building was built back in 1970, um, things were a little different at the Department of Buildings, stuff wasn't as well documented, so it's not as easy, um, to get that information.
Yeah, you would think that it would have to be in some ownership or something, the parking lot, some restriction on it.
At, at some, yes, at some point, but hopefully the Department of Buildings records will, will shed some light on that.
Okay, and...
I, I will.
You were actually able to find something called 850 Georgia Avenue?
In, so I found an open parking area on this block and lot, and it's block 4366, Lot 1, and then through, um, deed research there, I found a reference to 850 Georgia Avenue in a recorded document. Unfortunately, it didn't have anything to do with this parking issue, but, um...
But it's an alternate address of some...
Yes.
Okay. Okay, so that has to be resolved?
Yeah.
Because the building may not be in compliance, and then what do we do, right?
I, I will note, um, the Department of Buildings in 1989 issued a C of O that first established these retail stores along Pennsylvania Avenue, um, so we're also trying to get a, a hold of that application, to see what DOT was reviewing in terms of parking compliance, um, at that time, to issue the C of O. I'll note that the proposed PCE use has the same parking requirement as any of the retail stores, so...
So there was a subsequent C of O for the stores?
Yes, the first C of O that referenced, uh, the open parking area at 850 Georgia was issued in 1976.
Right.
Um, the second certificate of occupancy, uh, and we included that with our last submission, was from December of 1989, and that, I believe, is the first C of O that actually references the retail stores.
Okay. There was also, um, a reference to a BSA approval, um, in looking at the bins on the site. It was 243-71BZ, and maybe that was related to the parking, to allow it to be off-site, or I don't know what.
Sure. Absolutely.
Because maybe it was further away than the allowable, whatever the distance was, uh, so that's not something you can find online, so you should put in a request to get that folder.
I will, I will certainly get the, the resolution, and then follow up with actually obtaining the folder.
Okay, thank you. So are there any speakers on this item? So, I don't know how much time you're gonna need, because you have some research, what? I'm sorry, Mr. Skududo. I'm sorry, sorry, sorry.
It's, uh, Anthony Skududo, representing myself. Just for historical information, this particular building was constructed in 1971, the parcel, uh, the, the building proper, 1000 Pennsylvania Avenue, was owned and operated by, uh, Ideal Corporation of Brooklyn, New York, and the diagonal parking area was also owned and operated by Ideal Corporation, Brooklyn, New York. Family ownership on the parking lot, uh, might have been under the last name Rouse, R-A-E-S-U-C-H. Uh, in 1981, Parker Hannafin Corporation purchased Ideal Corporation, subsequently took Ideal Corporation out of New York City, moved it to Matamoros, Brownsville. The building was empty for approximately two years, purchased by the Rainbow Corporation Clothing Warehouse, at which time they also purchased the parking area and subdivided buildings along, uh, the, the faces along Pennsylvania Avenue and made, um, retail stores.
Are you related to the Rainbows?
No, Ideal Corporation was my first job in 1974, and the reason I'm not in manufacturing engineering anymore is because they moved to Matamoros. But the, the ownership, I, I just, really the historical thing in terms of ownership checks, but the, the diagonal parking area was part of the building proper, and it was, uh, I was involved in, in, uh, plant management, in that location, and it was a restrictive, uh, declaration, the parking lot was required to support the population of employees in the building.
You don't happen to have it in a...
And it was one of the first factories built in modern times with super high bay areas, so it was like a real nice building when it was, no. And that's the story of my life.
What are the odds that you would know this, these intimate details?
When the job first came up, I was like, you know, it just was melancholy, but I had known that, you know, after, after, uh, the, the major corporation Parker Hannafin purchased Ideal, um, we were part of the, um, move, you know, I was in the final group closing it up and moving the equipment to, uh, uh, Brownsville, Matamoros, that's NAFTA, thank you very much.
So maybe if you could share your information...
Yeah, I, I, I think I might be able to fill in, I don't know, so we'll do it subsequent, you know, later on, but I, I think I might be able to fill in some historical information to help him research.
Because if there was a restrictive declaration, presumably it was recorded, and it's just not showing up on Accra's, so you'll have to go to archives to get up.
That'd be great, I appreciate, uh, Mr. Skududo's testimony, very helpful.
We all did.
Um, I believe if I could have three weeks to submit, I should be able to put together the, the information that the board is requesting.
Okay, so... So how about for a submission on, ooh? So that's one, two, so we don't have a hearing on the first, basically two weeks of, first week of April, so that would put us at April 14th. If you were to submit like on, so, because that's, you wanted three weeks, right? So that would put you on March 26th, and then we don't have a hearing two weeks from then, the next hearing's the 14th, is that okay?
Um, yeah, I mean, I, I don't want to request one week and then try to rush a decision, and then we end up deferring.
Okay, so then how about that? So you submit on March 26th, that's a Thursday?
Thursday, okay.
And thus, and, um, that gives you a little bit of breathing room, but the new official regime is March 27th, it's late.
Okay.
And you need to ask permission to submit it any later than that, okay?
Yep.
So the alarm clock, clock goes off on March 25th, and you start to panic, because you have tomorrow to get it in.
I better get in touch with the board if...
It always goes through the thing that's called Submit BSA.
And that email address is up and running again, correct?
Yes, it is.
All right.
That's the only thing that people got a little bit of a pass on, we had a problem with the email, but not that much of a problem with the email.
Okay, um, so, I'm sorry, and the decision date would be then on the...
April 14th.
Okay.
So the closing? That's, yeah, that, or let's see, that's closing date on April 14th, assuming, because we really need to...
We could keep it open, and then we could do a closed grant, if everything's suitable.
Yeah, so decision on the 14th, yeah, assuming that we resolve this parking.
Excellent, thank you.
Great, thanks. We're not... What? We can close and keep the record open, right?
We don't know, I mean, it's a big zoning issue.
You may want to talk about it, why reopen?
Okay, all right, okay, so it's a continued hearing then? So it's continuing, we're not, okay. What's the consensus? We're not closing. Okay, we're going to, we're going to, um, continued hearing on April 14th?
With a possible closing grant, provided this issue is addressed.
Yes, there you go.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Continued hearing items, item number 12, 28612BZ, 1925 Union Street, Brooklyn.
Hello, good morning, Eric Palatnik.
Good morning. You wanted to adjourn this?
Yes, the, uh, and the reason, I just wanted to bring some information to the board, the congregation that owns the church, the property to build their church, is having some monetary issues, so, uh, part of the application that's, uh, portion of the application process right now is the environmental review that's being undergone, and it's quite expensive, the cost that just came in, the proposals, so that's part of the reason for our delay, so we just asked for the board to have a little bit of patience with them as they sort through, they're not a very wealthy congregation, and the numbers that are in their world are relatively expensive, so we just, we just need a little bit of time to sort through our finances and figure out what we can afford to do and what we can't.
Should we take this off calendar or something?
That's where I was going, yes, if you can, if that would be acceptable to the board, we'd appreciate it, and then we'll come back.
That's fine, it's actually better for everybody that we're not wondering what happened to you, and worrying, and all that stuff. Okay. So we'll take it off calendar?
Great, thank you very...
And so it gives you a chance to submit a really fantastically complete, excellent, no criticism submission, right?
Those are my favorite applications.
There you go.
Thank you for your, thank you for your time.
Item number 13, 15513BZ, 17821784 East 28th Street, Brooklyn.
Good afternoon, Lyra J. Altman, the office of Frederick A. Becker. We did hear your comments yesterday, we understand your concern, we acknowledge there have been a number of adjournments on this case. At this point, we have the plans, as you know, there was a revision in that the adjacent property was purchased, and the deal is now finalized, they have finalized the plans, the holdup has been the zoning analysis, the architect has attested to me that he is completing the zoning analysis, and I will have it, I would ask for you to please indulge us and provide us one more date on the calendar, and you will see that we will provide the documents.
How about this, since we've adjourned it so many times? Because you're still waiting, you still don't have...
Well, I spoke with the architect as recently as yesterday, and I was actually working with him on the zoning analysis myself, and if I have to, I will do the zoning analysis myself to make sure that this is in for the next date.
Okay, so here's the thing, because we don't want to have another adjournment, why don't you put together, as I explained, described to Mr. Palatnik, a perfect, complete, no questions open, filled with all of the kinds of quest, uh, responses in advance of the questions that you now know we want answered? Make sure it's perfect, submit that, we'll take a look, and if it's as complete as you're hoping it is, we'll set it on for...
This, this client was very, very adamant to me, he is having a situation where people are finally providing some funding, if this gets pulled off calendar, he is very concerned that the funding will be pulled from the project, which is of course a large concern when you've got a community facility, that once again...
It's been going on since May.
We understand, that is, again, the reason this has been going on for so long, was we had a problem with the neighbor, if you recall, there was some discussion with the neighbor, the neighbor decided that what they would like to do is to sell the property to my client, my client had to take some time to find the funding to make that happen. He is now prepared, he is closing on that, as I told you, it's complete, the plans have now been finished, it is just the zoning analysis that remains.
How about we put it on for two months from now? I don't want an incomplete submission.
We could please, I would please ask it to put us on for the requested date of March 31st, as I said, I will tell you that I will do the zoning analysis if I have to, to make this come into you on time.
March 31st means that you would actually have to...
Submission on March 17th.
No, so March 31st means that you would have to submit it on March 12th, that's a week from now, because now we're making...
The submission dates...
Sorry, we're making submissions on the Thursday, that's two weeks before the hearing date.
Oh, new modification, I apologize, I was unaware of that in my request.
New regime, the reason for the new regime, those of you who submit regularly, is that we never receive anything until the Wednesday before the hearing date, because everyone ignores the submission deadlines, no longer okay. So, since March 12th is only a week from now...
March 12th, we cannot do, I'm not gonna say that we can.
Okay, so let's say...
We could do March 17th, I said, so if we add two days to that to make it a Thursday, that would be the 19th?
That would be the 19th, which would mean for a hearing on March 31st, is, I don't know if that's enough time.
No, we could submit the 17th for the 31st.
Sorry? What do you, something in common? No, okay, how about this, we're going to make it April 14th, so that you can submit on, because again, I don't, I don't want to see a complete submission.
If I may manage to grab a calendar so I can...
Yeah, okay. Yeah, so the 26th, that would be one, two, yeah, that's it.
Passover and stuff like that?
I don't know, right, I don't know when Passover is.
That's exactly what I was gonna check. The 14th is not a Jewish holiday.
No.
14th we can certainly do.
Okay, so a submission on March 26th, which is a Thursday, for a hearing on April 14th, and, um, as I said to, uh...
Continued hearing the 14th, submission 326?
326, right? If it's submitted on 327, it's late.
Understood.
And you will be asked to adjourn unless you get specific, uh, permission to extend the submission.
Understood, I appreciate that. Thank you very much for giving us a date.
Okay, thank you.
Item number 14, 30913BZ, 965 East 24th Street, Brooklyn.
Consistent with what you said previously, again, Lyra Altman, from the office of Lyra Altman now, consistent with what you said previously, many times the architects provide the documents the week before the hearing, true to form, this architect provided me with the documents Tuesday evening, Wednesday morning I received a call from your board that you were not going to accept it, the, in any event, it is now complete, it is actually already copied and ready to go, so...
And just a question, did you review it before it was submitted, are you happy with what the submission looks like?
That's why it took so long to get the plans.
Okay.
I actually kicked them back to the architect three times, if you must know.
Okay, good, training the architect is a good thing.
That is why they were late, they, they would have been on time if I submitted the first set I received.
Okay, all right, so this one, you've already made the submission?
No, the submission is sitting copied, when I spoke to the examiner, he said to me that the board does not want the submission until after the hearing.
Oh.
He was very adamant about that, so I respected his statements to him.
That makes sense, okay. So then, this being the hearing, you could submit it therefore on the 12th, for example?
Absolutely.
Okay, so for a hearing on March 24th, right? And, is that right? Am I right?
12th, 24th would be the next hearing, after 31st.
Yeah, yeah, wait, let me just make sure it's two weeks. No, 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 sorry, the 31st.
If we could please put on the 24th, I would appreciate it.
Then you wouldn't need to submit the drawings by this Thursday, the 5th?
As I said, they're already ready and on my desk.
So the submission on the 5th?
That's not a problem. Submission on...
The March 5th for a hearing on March 24th?
35 for 324.
Okay, remember your alarm is going off on Wednesday, it's screaming at you if you're not in trouble.
As I said, you will, you will actually probably receive it this evening, it's already complete.
Okay, great.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Item number 15, 32113BZ, 3719104th Street, Queens.
Hello, Eric Palatnik. I love this new system, because usually I'm late in submitting, so now with it being Thursday, when I submit Wednesday, I should be a day early.
Right.
Fantastic, fantastic, no, it's much better with on a Thursday date, thank you very much.
Whatever you're smoking, right, okay. Whatever you're smoking, right, okay.
Well, usually we're late, everybody, the applicant's usually late, by getting it to you by on a Wednesday, we're usually a lot ahead of the game.
This is two weeks and a little bit of Thursday, right?
Yes, and we'll be on time with things.
Um, okay, so, you did by the drawings, you show that it's close to somebody, I, okay, I don't think we had any issues.
Right, no, I had no issues.
Okay, anything, so, are there any speakers on this?
I don't think Chief Scaduto has any knowledge of this property item.
He actually was born next month.
After he lost his last job as an engineer.
So, for a motion to close?
Chair Perlmutter?
Aye.
Vice Chair Hinkson?
Aye.
Commissioner Montanez?
Aye.
Commissioner Otley Brown?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you, my decision date?
Oh, decision, sorry, decision date, but that one, we don't have any submissions, so we can make that, so it's March, we do it for March 10? We have a lot of submissions. Let's do it the 24th.
That's fine, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Item number 16, 5-14BZ, 1807 East 22nd Street, Brooklyn.
Good afternoon, Lyra Altman, from the office of Lyra J. Altman, as your board is aware, this property is actually changing, so, I had spoken with counsel about this, and we agree that taking this off calendar would be advisable until the client has finished redesigning this project.
Okay, great, thank you.
Thank you.
Item number 17, 2814BZ, 3540 Nostran Avenue, Brooklyn.
Hi, Eric Palatnik. We attended your review session yesterday, and really be happy to amend the plans to show perennials. And the photos of the fence, the fencing companies are not really in full swing right now, because obviously, you know, the snow falling on the ground, we are hoping the board could potentially close and grant the application with the plans marked that new slats will be put in, so as to allow us to get our CVO and get everything in order, and we'll put in the slats in early spring sometime.
And send us pictures?
We'll send you pictures, we'll be happy to send pictures to show that it's been done.
Okay, what do we think about that? Is everybody okay with that?
It's okay.
Because it is winter and looking it out.
Yes.
Yeah, okay.
Thank you.
Okay, so, so that would be, the condition would be that the slats are, the little caps are installed, the drawings have to be before we actually vote, the drawings have to be amended to show perennials, and then it would also be conditioned on maintaining the fence and planting and replacing them as necessary, that trash pickup continues to be six times a week with bimonthly extermination and inspection and, and treatment as necessary, okay?
And the menu board adjusted every day.
Yes.
Yeah, every evening.
Every evening.
Evening hours, yes.
Okay, so, are there speakers on this, for a motion to close then?
Chair Perlmutter?
Aye.
Vice Chair Hinkson?
Aye.
Commissioner Montanez?
Aye.
Commissioner Otley Brown?
Aye.
Okay, so, for decision date on March 24th?
Thank you very much.
And a submission, how soon can you get the revision in on drawings, should just take the word down?
Just, I'm thinking of today's date, definitely by next Thursday, which I think, which I think meets your deadline.
Actually, it doesn't, but I think for this case it does.
Yeah, in this case it doesn't.
It doesn't, huh, two, two and a half weeks, that's 14, 17?
The 12th is actually only...
Yeah, you're right, it's not enough, I will get it to you right away, I promise.
Okay, good.
And maybe you just want to put on the drawings too, just the note about putting the slats in, in the spring, so that it's...
Yeah, I had that as a note, I had that as a note.
Actually, all the conditions on the drawings, that would be helpful for DOB, right, so you, you've got those conditions, right?
Yes, and whatever...
Plantings, trash pickup six times a week, extermination bimonthly, fixing slats, right?
And soundboard.
And soundboard.
Menu board.
Menu board.
Adjusted each evening to be acceptable evening levels, whatever that means.
Did they give us a decibel level?
It's that the menu board is manually adjusted.
I know, was there, did they give us a decibel level, which it got...
I think so.
Remember we had a, a letter...
We gave you some information from the tech, from the company, yes.
Some, but, yeah.
Describing it, I don't know if it had the exact decibel levels in it or not.
Well, it should, it said that it was adjustable from zero to 60 decibels.
Correct.
So, I don't know.
We'll include those as the conditions.
Okay.
Yeah, I think it was like 14.
Okay, good, so, we said the 12th, for a decision on the 24th.
Thank you very much.
Item number 18, 314114BZ, 165 Spencer Street, Brooklyn.
Is anyone here for this person? Okay, so this one, they asked for a submission, no, they actually asked to adjourn without a specific time, but, so, if we just work on this general theory, we could have a submission on the 12th of March, for a hearing on March 31st?
Do we know what their status is?
No, we don't know what their status is.
Let's push it out a little more then.
Okay, so, again, so how about a hearing on the 14th of April, with a submission, it's a little hard to do this, on the 26th of March?
Item number 19, 4414BZ, 92 Lake Street, 416 Washington Street, Manhattan.
Richard Lobel, I'm Sheldon Lobel, PC, good afternoon.
Hi.
Hi. We had a representative at the executive session yesterday, and we know that the chair noted that we provided proof of notice to tenants, property owners, LPC approved plans, certificate of no effect, an architect's statement, an FEIS statement, I think, and the chair can correct me if I'm mistaken, but I think most of the issues now revolve around a letter of substantial compliance application, and, very briefly, by way of background, this was an application which was granted by the board in 2000 and amended in 2001 to allow essentially residential use within an M15 district, so, the provisions of that grant required certain modifications in 2001 to the residential entries, elimination of a separate arcade-like entrance, modification of a residential entrance, elimination of a corridor, and I understand from, from Ms. Matias as well as staff that while we submitted the LOC, because formally there's a change to those plans, I think that the impact of this grant, this PCE grant, is kind of separate, the grant by the BSA at the time of the residential use in 2000, 2001, allowed residential use in an M15, the commercial use at the time was as of right, the technical modification we're making to that amendment was to really allow the PCE to occupy a portion of that commercial space, and while, of course, we are at the, you know, under the jurisdiction of the board, and we're at the board's discretion, I would kind of question, and maybe counsel might weigh in on the, the fact that the area that we're noting in the plans right now is shaded, saying, you know, part of proposed application, the areas that we're discussing as part of the 2001 amendment really fall outside of that, so that's, I just, we'll just bring that up for discussion.
Right, but actually, not exactly, I'm looking for the plan right now, so there was this through block connection, right? And, and oddly, the connection to the PCE interrupts the through block connection, so, goes right, like the front door goes right into the PCE, which of course is a reasonable thing, but I, I'm not sure that it's not in conflict with the original understanding that there would be a through block connection.
Okay, I think what I would do then, and we've already reached out to the project architect at the time, and actually I have a scheduled discussion with him today, so I can talk to him a little bit about that, I'm hoping that, that I guess as part of the LOC, perhaps, understanding that the building is consented to this application, that we basically submit the details regarding what's been done to the plan, and hopefully the board can accept those and move on with the application.
What do you mean, what's been done to the...
Well, to the extent that there's an interruption of that through block corridor, just basically submit that, and, and as part of the LOC, and, and consider...
That's the thing, I'm not sure that it's, that's part of the problem, I'm not sure that it's a substantial compliance, if it was material, it apparently was material to the board, because the first grant talked about the through block connection, then there was a later modification where it talked about the through block connection, and made some adjustments by saying, well, it's okay that you're modifying it, because the, the doors will be capacious, right? And so there are no longer any capacious doors, whatever, I'm not sure which doors were capacious, but, so, it may not actually be a substantial compliance letter.
I guess the, I guess the only thing I would ask is, well, 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 well.
My PSC, I don't know, no, I don't know.
Well, we'll have to evaluate it.
Well, the only thing I would say, is that the use of the ground floor for use group six commercial use is available as of right, so, in the typical analysis of an LOC, if we said that the degree of the variance here is actually decreasing by an enlargement of the potential commercial space, then I understand that the building would sacrifice whatever the small number of square feet is, as far as that connection is concerned, but that the actual crux of the variance does not increase.
Right, but, so, so the issue is, when I look at the floor plan, that the actual entrance, I believe, because I don't have the, I don't have the originally approved drawings here on the screen.
Sure.
But, the actual connection to the PCE is, interrupts the through block connection, so, if the landlord could figure out a way of providing the PCE access without interrupting the through block connection, that's a different thing, I mean, and then, there's all these other interruptions of the through block that are shown on this drawing, but then that wouldn't kind of be your problem, it would be more the landlord's issue, so, but at the moment, it seems as if you're interfering with the through block.
Okay, so, we're going to have that conversation with the former architect, and, and see if we can kind of provide some insight.
Okay, I'm not sure how you would do that, frankly, because you have a retail space in the corner that looks like it's already in use?
Correct.
If you, you know, if you could have gone directly from the street, then you'd be fine, but it doesn't look like you can.
Okay.
Just also answer the thing, because when Becca sent you the email, it was also about the LPC approvals?
Sure, yeah, we'd be happy to provide that.
Okay, so, we can't close this, because this is a big open issue that needs to be discussed, but it's going to take, oh, obviously, there's, you have a lot of work to figure this out, so, what do you think, you need six weeks?
I would ask for four weeks, just to kind of keep it going, and I, and I do, we'll hopefully get some resolution by then, but, I mean, I, I think, it's...
Like, for instance, with a substantial compliance letter, where, well, you, there were questions that were posed to you, and I know that you're responding to them, so, I don't know if four weeks is really enough.
Okay, so, Chair, if six weeks is more appropriate, that's fine.
I just want to make mention, I'm sorry, Madam Chair, about the environmental, just, we may want you to do, not, I was in discussion with Rory, with respect to the, the, any effect of the, on this, the neat financial, sorry.
On the FEIS.
FEIS, right, we just may want him to do a tech memo or something, just...
Tech memo? No, but, there's already a statement in the statement of facts about compliance with the FEIS, and because it's not really effectively a change in use, I mean, it's a retail-type use.
Rory's going to get back to me.
The FEIS was about residential, right, not retail, which was allowed.
Yeah, so, just want to be clear, but just in case something comes up.
Okay.
So, yeah, so we'll just have a notice.
Okay.
Okay, so, let's just say six weeks.
Okay.
And so, that would mean, what does that mean, so, how about on an April 21st hearing, would that be? The next avail, so if we were to do four weeks even, that still puts you at an April 14th hearing, because there's no hearing the, the week of the 6th.
So, do we say, we said April 21st, was that?
Yeah, April 21st would give you, one, two, three, four, gives you five weeks, essentially.
Okay, that's great.
Okay, so that means, hearing on April 21st with a submission on, on April 2nd, that's a Thursday, under the new...
Regime, thank you.
Item number 20, 6314BZ, 5500 Broadway, the Bronx.
Good afternoon, Todd Dale, for the applicant, from review session, I know the board raised a few questions, was there, I believe you made a question about the DOI forms, we did submit those in January.
No, we don't, we received the DOI, we received the DOI. And we, we don't, we still need fire department? I, I don't know.
Sorry, sorry, what?
I think DOI. Oh, yeah, right, right.
Yeah, regarding that, I mean, we can go to the floor area issue, regarding that, we contact...
Yeah, sorry, sorry, I'm sorry.
No, no, that's fine, regarding the floor area, the calculation, this is a new architect, he wasn't associated with the previous special permit approval, and the zero square footage figure was based on actually the previous approval of the board, the previous grant, I forgot the number, I think it was 7700BZ, I don't, off the top of my head, I don't remember the number, but, under that grant, it was listed as zero square feet, and all floor area being in the cellar, so, that's where our figure was based on, and we provided those photos to show that when you open the door, you essentially hit the steps and head right down, so, that, that's a calculation that was...
Have you maybe made that calculation of, of the stair, and included that as just his base cellar? No, it's zero in the cellar, so... It's just an incorrect way of calculating floor area, it doesn't matter what somebody did before, if it was wrong before, it's still wrong, right?
Okay, that's fine, I'm just, I'm giving some history as far as...
There's a section that needs to be, it's not a lot of floor area, it's just that it needs to be corrected, right?
In any case, we've reached out to the architect to ask for some clarification on the issue, I just wanted to provide some history as to where that initial figure came from, was based on the previous approval, but we've reached out to the architect to, to get that, and as you noted, the figure will not be a significant figure, and it will still be compliant with bulk requirements.
Right, you're not increasing anything, so...
And regarding the fire department letter, just two things, we reached out again to the, the operator, who maybe isn't as familiar with all the certificates that he has, we did try and provide the certificate showing that the sprinkler test had passed its five-year test, I think in 2012, so it would still be okay, that's what that one certificate was, regarding the fire alarm certification, he had a certificate of fitness, which we submitted, but I'm actually going to reach out to the fire department and speak about like specific proofs, you know, documentation, and give those as examples to the operator, because he tells me he has a huge folder of all the approvals he's ever gotten, and that, we'll, we'll figure out what we need to do in order to address the concerns raised by the fire department, I would just note, though, that there are no current violations pending regarding the fire department, and also that since this is a new special permit, we will put the standard fire department notes on the plans, so, even beyond the proof, since it is a new special permit, we'll put all those normal conditions within the plans.
Right, except that it's, because it's a legalization, all that stuff should be installed already, so there, you could, you should be able to have sprinkler drawings, because it was installed already, or some other proof that, that it's sprinkler drawings that are signed off, right?
We'll clarify that the, the certificate we have is for the test, the number, I realize the number doesn't refer to the PCE space, but we'll get proof to show that it refers to the cellar PCE space, and then regarding the fire alarm, I assume that there's a similar certificate that we'll use to supplement the certificate of fitness, we provided, but, we already reached out to the, the operator about that, so, you know, if all else fails, we'll just ask him to send us the whole folder, and we'll dig through it to find the various approvals.
Okay, okay, any, any, any speakers, fire department, are you interested? Okay, okay, so, I don't know if we can close this, right, can we, can we close this, just on this, okay, so, all right, so you'll submit the information about sprinkler and fire alarm, you'll revise the plan to show whatever many square feet there are on the first floor, and otherwise, provided the massage therapy license, and you change the, you put notes on the plans.
Correct.
Okay, so, for a motion to close?
Chair Perlmutter?
Aye.
Vice Chair Hinkson?
Aye.
Commissioner Montanez?
Aye.
Commissioner Otley Brown?
Aye.
And how much time?
Just in case we have to get involved digging through this folder, for two weeks to submit, whatever that works with the Thursday, two weeks and a day, you know, I don't, I don't know what the...
Two, so if you submit it on Thursday, the 19th?
Okay.
That gets you a hearing on, oh, rats, I mean, this decision on April 14th, you could also, we went back, one, no, you could also submit March 26th for the same effect, March, yeah, because we don't have a hearing the first week in April.
There's not, so if we submitted the 19th, that's not enough time for a decision on the 31st?
No, because it has to be two, well, actually, for this case, yeah, for this case, we'll give you a, it's not that much, so how about submitting on Wednesday, the 18th, so it gives us a little more time?
Sure.
For 3/31 decision?
So, submit 3/18 for decision 3/31, okay.
We're flexible where we need to be.
We're happy to submit on a Wednesday.
It's part of the new regime.
That's fine, thank you.
Okay, item number 21, 9114BZ, 3420 Bedford Avenue, Brooklyn.
Good afternoon, Lyra Altman, from the office of Lyra Altman, once again, we heard your comments, we would request one continued hearing on 4/14, I know your board is considering taking this off calendar, if you would consider the 14th, we would appreciate it.
What's the reason for considering it, it's the fourth adjournment?
Understood, the client has asked me to request the 14th for a hearing, has told me that he would be ready.
Okay, hasn't been ready so far, would actually prefer you withdraw this application, because it's hard for me to see how you're going to make the argument that's necessary.
We will not be withdrawing this application, but, we would, we would understand your concerns regarding going off calendar to address the issues, if your board would prefer, we would of course prefer to stay on calendar.
Okay, so we're going to take this off calendar till you, till you have something, I'm trying to imagine what the something would be, but it better be a complete something, okay?
We are prepared, we are working on something for you.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Good luck with that. Item number 22, 11414BZ, 2442 East 14th Street, Brooklyn.
Eric?
Eric.
Eric. I think he's in the hall just talking. Thank you. It's okay.
Eric Palatnik.
So, yay, thank you for reducing the rear yard to 27 feet?
Yes.
And not making any other modifications to the mass of the building, so we don't have to have further discussion on this?
I'm glad you're happy, the owner is happy that you're happy, so everybody's happy.
Yay, we're all so happy, any other comments? Are there any speakers on this? So, I'm prepared to close and grant this, because you've been so good.
Thank you very much, we appreciate that.
Okay, so for a motion to close?
Chair Perlmutter?
Aye.
Vice Chair Hinkson?
Aye.
Commissioner Montanez?
Aye.
Commissioner Otley Brown?
Aye.
For motion to grant? Chair Perlmutter?
Aye.
Vice Chair Hinkson?
Aye.
Commissioner Montanez?
Aye.
Commissioner Otley Brown?
Aye.
Thank you very much.
You. Item number 23, 12414BZ, 112, 11112 Gilmore Court, Brooklyn, I don't know why that stops [inaudible].
Richard, hopefully that will be the last time we'll have to call it out at the hearing, so, Richard Lobel from Sheldon Lobel, PC, we had a representative at the executive session, so we know that the chair and commissioners were pleased that the bulk has been taken down, the rear, rear yard was altered from 25 feet to 32 feet, which is a sizable rear yard, the, there's a, the attic was set back, it's an additional distance, as well as the roof line, which was altered, we also understand that there are minor maybe modifications in design, as well as some questions regarding flood regulations, with me today is Peter G., the project architect, Peter has spoken to Neil Adler, the chief Peter has spoken to Neil Adler, the chief examiner at DOB regarding the flood issues. I thought perhaps, in accordance with the chair's request, it would be best for us to have him speak.
Thank you. Please state your name for the record.
Peter G., I'm the applicant, architect, as we're in. I had a short meeting with Neil Adler, who is chief plan examiner in Brooklyn in regards to the flood plain and the regulations that are current now. First of all, the NAVD, which is the datum that they use for the flood, has been corrected since Sandy to two-point-five-six feet above the plain. And my proposed.
Above the what?
Um, it's the basic datum. It's just imaginary line.
Above the Brooklyn data?
Yeah, Brooklyn datum, I'm sorry.
But I thought it's one-point-four-six, four-seven.
Well, I got it was two-point-five-six, that's why.
What does two-point-five-six refer to? The conversion from Brooklyn datum to NAVD or just how much you have to raise it in that location?
It is the NAVD. Based on all the surveys I've been getting, they say it's two-point-five-six above the mean sea level at Sandy Hook.
I don't know what the two-point-five-six refers to. The conversion from Brooklyn datum to NAVD eighty-eight is about one-point-four-five.
Okay.
And the base flood elevation here is plus-ten NAVD eighty-eight, correct? Is that the information you, it's almost at grade level?
Okay.
Is that what you have? I mean, actually, your first floor elevation appears to be okay.
At grade, correct.
No, it's not at grade. It's, it's at the proper, it's at the design flood elevation.
Right. The question is now the basement, which is.
Cellar, exactly.
Cellar, yes.
Because it's my understanding that, you know, you have to fill in the cell, and you can't have any mechanicals down the cellar. You have the furnace and the hot water heater shown in the base, in the cellar. So did you get any clarification from them regarding if you have an existing cellar, whether or not it has to be filled into the base flood elevation?
All right, I could quote the section in the code. This is from the two thousand and eight building code saying the lowest floor, including the basement, of flood zone purpose shall be elevated to at or above the design flood elevation.
So the design flood elevation is at least two feet above the base flood elevation? And in NAVD eighty-eight, the base flood elevation for this site, if you go to the FEMA maps, is plus-ten. So the design flood elevation is plus-twelve.
All right.
Which is, if you change it to, well, your Brooklyn, your first floor elevation is a little bit above, it's almost three feet, so you're okay.
Right.
But my concern was regarding the existence of the cellar.
Right.
I'm not sure if buildings is allowing you to keep, say, a non-conforming cellar space or whether they're requiring you to comply as if you were like building a new building. I'm not, you know.
I actually think it's misunderstanding what you were asked to do by DOB. I think DOB was asking you to raise your first floor two foot seven inches above grade.
Yeah, it could be.
Because that's consistent with two feet above base flood.
Plus the.
But, right.
Yeah, plus the structure.
The structure, yeah.
Okay, so I did raise the first floor.
Yes, that's okay.
So the question is whether we could use the base cellar.
Right.
And as a use, as long as we are above the flood elevation.
But the flood elevation is at grade.
It's not down in the cellar. You're in a flood, you're in a flood zone, which means that you're more than, way more than your basement floods.
Okay, I need to verify that.
Yes, you could.
Because I assumed it was two-point-five-six, so I'm mistaken in terms of that.
And actually to relocate your mechanicals above the base flood, above the design flood elevation.
Okay.
And you're given, you know, floor area waivers for that.
So, but the way you're reading this now, you've got adequate height because grade effectively is base flood?
Design flood.
Design, grade is design flood?
Yeah. Grade can be measured, height can be measured for design.
No, I don't mean the height. I mean the actual grade here.
The existing grade at the front.
Because you add one-point-four something to eight, eight-point-seven.
The grade at the front of the property is actually the base flood elevation according to FEMA maps.
Okay.
So he's raised his first floor almost three feet, which complies with the regulations. Now, the only question is, can he use the space below grades?
Right.
And then, you know, no matter whether you could use the space, you have to relocate your mechanicals.
Sure.
So, you know, what you're doing underneath the house isn't really about the massing of the house, but we need it to comply with flood regulations? Assuming that the massing doesn't change, we're, we're okay.
Right.
But, because we don't look at where you're putting your mechanicals, but you can't put your mechanicals where it's not allowed under the regulations.
And if you relocate your mechanicals to an upper floor, you can, you know, waive that area.
Right.
Under the new flood zoning regulations.
That's true. So then you would be reducing the amount of the ask for the floor area.
Well, or he might make a small addition at the attic for the mechanicals.
Right. Well, the attic actually, I think, has room.
Right.
Because we'd like to be, yeah, I mean, there is arguably room for the mechanicals if you wanted to put it there.
Mm-hmm. Well, it's something they'd have to look at.
Yeah. So I don't, that's a question. I don't know if you want to be finished with this massing and figure out how to fit what you need to fit or you need to go back and look at how you're complying with flood regulations. And by the way, I know this is confusing for everybody. We're still learning. If, if Mr. Lobel contacts our project manager, we can, or Ryan, actually Ryan Singer, we can give you the information about where to find your flood elevation, what the rules, the DOB regulations for this, so that you're not just kind of blindly listening to the plan examiner who could easily be as confused as everybody else. This is, this is new and now it really makes a difference. And if you were to look at, if you go onto the FEMA website and you were to just look at easily searching a FEMA flood map, you'll find a flood map from two thousand and seven, which won't do you a bit of good because there are new flood maps, but they're very hard to find.
Right.
So hence the confusion about you being in a flood plain. Okay. So I think we, I guess we need to hear from you about whether you're going to stay within the existing bulk or whether you need to come check this out for a couple of weeks. Maybe that's the best.
I would keep the same mass. I don't believe we're going to change that.
Sure.
Richard Lobel. We'd be happy if the board would retain the same massing for the, for the building and we would find a way to put our mechanicals in the available space.
And then we'll just have a condition that the DOB will review the cellar.
Right.
Okay.
Right, okay, great, we can do that.
Okay.
So any other comment? Uh, any speakers on this? Okay, so we can close this. So for a motion to close? Chair Perlmutter?
Aye.
Vice Chair Hinkson?
Aye.
Commissioner Montanez?
Aye.
Commissioner Otley Brown?
Aye.
And so I don't think, other than adding the note to the drawings?
Mm-hmm.
And maybe a state, maybe a note in the statement of facts?
Sure.
That issues about flood regulations will be complied with and DOB will review, et cetera. But the, the massing is the massing. So we could. If you could submit on March nineteenth for a decision on March thirty-first?
March nineteenth and March thirty-first. If you'll give me one moment. Peter, Peter, March nineteenth is okay? Okay, fantastic. Thank you.
I did myself a favor there. Okay, anyway, should have been the twelve, but never mind. I'm learning too.
Too late, no backsies. Run, Richard, run.
Item number twenty-four, one-seventy-five fourteen BZ, eleven-sixty-two Broadway, Manhattan.
Good morning, Ali Carrari, Greenberg Charade, Glaney's Council, the applicant. I was in attendance for the review session yesterday and there were just a couple remaining comments and questions that I'm happy to address. Chair, Chair Perlmutter noted that the certificate of appropriateness from LPC showed an incorrect expiration date. We have actually already had the CVA reissued to reflect the correct expiration date of December seventeenth, two thousand and nineteen. We're happy to submit this. We're ready to submit it today to complete the record.
Okay, so you have it?
We do have it, yeah. The board also requested further elaboration on the effect of the sloped wall design feature in the potential event of one or both of the neighboring buildings being built up to the height of the proposed building. Unfortunately, Morris Ajmi, the architect, unable to attend today's hearing, but I'm happy to address the design considerations for this feature that I've discussed with him many times in relation to our LPC application and this application. The building was designed with the understanding that there's the potential for the neighboring sites to be altered or redeveloped. And he did mention in the previous hearing that he believes that the design will read from the street in either event due to the combination of the sloped wall and also the contrast between the light brick material of the sloped wall and the dark painted metal bay. And that would read from the street both as a color contrast and a depth contrast. The historic bay windows that, as noted in the CVA, the feature alludes to, that's present in many buildings, in many instances throughout the historic district, are abutted by adjacent buildings of similar height. So I think that the abutting, the possibility of adjacent buildings would not ruin this reference to the projecting bay. And in fact, the physical separation that this feature allows might even make the distinction more apparent. And we actually think that the potential for buildings next door to rise up higher supports our argument for the need for this feature from a marketing and positioning standpoint because it does provide that physical separation from the adjacent buildings, which for a site as narrow and small as this, really helps kind of bring attention to the building on the street, especially in the event of, you know, not rising high above the neighboring buildings as is, would currently be the case. Just as a final note, in any case, a building that rose up all the way to the height of this building would of course need some sort of discretionary approval, relief from zoning because they would be required to set back above the six stories. Both of the neighboring buildings are on much larger zoning lots, so they wouldn't be able to request a BSA variance, at least under the same uniqueness findings that we were able to make. They do both contain contributing buildings that could potentially get relief under a seventy-four seven-eleven application. But just to note that in any, in any case, it would have to be a discretionary approval that would involve landmarks.
Well, taken, okay. If you could actually just write that up in a short paragraph?
Sure.
That would be excellent.
Okay.
Submit that.
Absolutely.
And I don't think it needs to be in the statement of fact, just in a letter.
In a separate letter.
Yeah.
Yep.
And any other questions about that? Thank you, that's helpful.
Great.
Any speakers on this? Okay, so we can, we can close this. So for a motion to close? Chair Perlmutter?
Aye.
Vice Chair Hinkson?
Aye.
Commissioner Montanez?
Aye.
Commissioner Otley Brown?
Aye.
Okay. And if you could submit your very short paragraph right away?
Three-twelve for three-thirty-one?
Three, what'd you say? Three-twelve for three-twenty-four?
That's fine.
Right.
Three-twelve.
Or even three-five, if you could.
Three-five.
It's just two days.
Two days, yeah, absolutely.
Just to do a vast little paragraph of what you said so well.
So three-five for.
And, and for submission?
Yeah.
And three-twenty-four for decision?
Sure.
Okay, great, thanks.
Great.
This concludes the morning calendar. We resume at one o'clock for the new cases.
Yay!
Want to give ourselves some more lunch?
Oh, sorry, not one o'clock, one-thirty, one-fifteen?
What do you want?
One-fifteen.
One-fifteen, okay.
Okay, one-fifteen.
Oh, I'm sorry, we're back on the record. This is the afternoon session of the March third, two thousand and fifteen zoning calendar. We'll be giving new cases. Item number one, three-oh-three thirteen BZ, five-oh-six-five-ten Brook Avenue, the Bronx.
Okay, this one, is somebody here for this? We were asked to adjourn this, so I think we were asked to adjourn for two weeks. So, which doesn't really work in terms of our submission schedule. So therefore, we could have again a submission on, let's see, the nineteenth? For a hearing on the thirty-first?
So this is really postponement?
What?
Is it considered a postponement, though?
This is a postponement, yeah.
Okay, so I just wanted for the record.
It's really, oh, yeah, okay, it's postponement.
Item number two, thirty-seven fourteen BZ, eighty-six-ten Roosevelt Avenue, Queens.
Hello, good afternoon, Eric Pilatnik. We attended your review session yesterday and we heard your board's comments. If it pleases the board, I'll be happy to list your comments and then provide our response. One of the comments the board had was to state the application is a legalization. On our response to our notice of comments did include that. At the time of filing, it was not, but then they opened since we filed, so we corrected that. You asked for the uses on the first floor of the building. We'll put this in writing for you, but there's two, three restaurants, a laundromat, a cell phone store and a beauty salon are the uses that are downstairs.
And what about upstairs next?
Upstairs is a vacant office space that's on, this shares a similar, same floor with us, but it's not yet been leased or rented. I know that you asked for the adjacent uses, the uses that are adjacent to the property. Everything obviously along Roosevelt Avenue is highly commercial in nature. There's commercial on both sides of us along Roosevelt Avenue. Along Elbertian, it does become residential as you move back off of Roosevelt. But the building is concrete block, brick, concrete block building. We don't anticipate, there are no noise complaints that we know about and we don't anticipate disrupting anybody with the use that goes on here. This is more of a regular gym, not a, not a CrossFit or anything like that.
But the, there's no windows, right? Facing the, it's concrete block with windows?
Well, our building has windows in it, but I don't know.
Facing the residential side?
No, no, the windows face out towards Roosevelt.
Okay.
The board had a question about a neighbor that complained at the community board. We haven't heard from the neighbor since. We think it was during construction of the building that the neighbor was concerned about construction noise, but the building has since been completed. We think that was going back in time. We haven't heard from anybody and it was very well supported at the community board.
No, I think actually it was the neighbor attended the community board hearing on the PCE and expressed concern about the noise that could be created by the PCE that hadn't been installed yet.
Okay, that I wasn't aware of, but we.
Okay.
And we haven't heard anything from anybody since, since that meeting. And we've been open and operating and to the best of my knowledge, there's been no noise complaints.
Okay, so, and then the other questions were, since it's a legalization, the notes on the drawing should say existing fire alarms and sprinklers? And also the sound attenuation should also say that? But there's all these notes on the drawing about sound attenuation without showing us where they are. For example, it says twenty-five percent of the ceiling is acoustical, but it doesn't show us where. And it says attenuation members, measures were placed where it seemed like a good idea they should be placed, but where? So it, it.
We'll give you.
Some specifics. So it, it's some specifics.
We'll give you more detail and show and state exactly where things are.
Okay, and then you just, just need to clarify, so there's a 75 car accessory parking in the building?
Correct.
Isn't that available to the tenants?
It is available if people want to rent a space, but it's not required parking for the gym.
Right, but not rent a spa, rent a space on a day-to-day. In other words, accessory used to...
Right, if you want to come in and use the gym, you could, you'll pay to park at the parking garage, and you go in.
So it does have, have a daily parking?
Yes, yes.
Okay. Maybe you could give us, like, just a photograph of the parking?
Yeah, happy to.
Yeah. And then also, there was a question about signage. There were drawings for the signs. Did you have more?
No, I, I saw them. I guess they were submitted after the hearing folder was created, and you do show two small signs. Because I had visited the site, and I actually could not find any signage.
Yeah, they've been gathering money to do things piece by piece.
Oh, so the signs are not up yet?
No, they are up now, yes.
Oh, they are, okay.
Okay, so then, the signage calculation should be done, too, if they have it already, right? Signage calculus. So I think, any other questions about this? Are there any speakers on this? So I think we can close this, and you...
Thank you.
Submit all that stuff, okay?
Thank you.
So for motion to close?
Chair Pearl Mutter?
Aye.
Vice Chair Hinkson?
Aye.
Commissioner Montanez?
Aye.
Commissioner Oddly Brown?
Aye.
Okay, so you're going to submit, you're going to submit the information about the adjoining uses, right?
Yep.
Uh, revise the plans to show existing fire alarm sprinklers, all that, and describe where the sound attenuate, show where the sound attenuation measures are taken on the plans, and photograph of the access to the parking, and signage calculation.
Got it all, understood.
Okay, so that, can you, I don't know how much time you need, but...
We can spend about two weeks.
Two weeks, okay, so if you submit it on March 19th? Again, for a hearing on April 14th?
That's great. Thank you.
What?
Decision.
Sorry, for a decision.
Decision, that's what I thought. Thank you.
Item number three?
I'm sorry, what's that?
Okay, okay. Item number three, 12714BZ, 324100 First Street, Queens.
Good afternoon, Todd Dale for the applicant from review session. I know the board raised a number of questions. First, for the next submission, we'll amend the statement to include all of the commentary included in the notice of comments response, and make sure that's all collected in one document. With respect to the study that was provided, just to clarify, that study was submitted in response to a question regarding the number of dwellings that were proposed. It's not intended to be a vacant lot study. Therefore, we agree that the narrative or description doesn't have any discussion of the vacant lots in the area. We will submit a study of narrow vacant lots in the study. We've done so for comparable applications, for use variance applications. So we can do a study, and I know that there's a, you know, standard questions the board ask, but we'll submit that study of the area.
Sorry, but how are you planning on making the A finding without having done that?
Previously, for applications of this sort, we've submitted when it's been a narrow lot, we've described the fact that it's a narrow lot, and when it's been a bulk application, or excuse me, a bulk request as opposed to a use request, there's been less scrutiny by the board previously. In this instance...
Not for the applications I ever made about a vacant lot.
In any case, we'll definitely provide that study. We'll be able to provide that study and show, you know, the radius diagram that was submitted with the application shows that there are, I think, only two or three vacant lots, but we'll enumerate it, note the width of these lots, and provide as much history. We can also include photographs of those lots with the study, you know, to supplement any information or findings that we've got. But we would agree that the study provided is not a vacant lot study, and we will submit that.
On your map, I couldn't read the lot numbers, so if somehow...
On the dwelling unit?
Yeah.
Okay, that's fine, we can, we can maybe do a table of that to just describe the dwelling units. We'll keep those two studies separate, too, for convenience sake, I don't want to put all that information on one single map. We've already ordered the Sanborn map to provide some history of the lot configuration. There was a survey that was submitted with a notice of comments. We can double check and make sure that it's part of the record, but we had submitted a survey. I think there was a question regarding that.
I think that was resubmitted. Would that have been? No, that was a different one, sorry, sorry.
We'll make sure, we'll submit it a second time, just to make sure that it's included in the survey. Regarding the deeds, the format that we provided those deeds in was a format that we had previously used and developed in conjunction with the board, but if you want a different format for the deed...
No, what was the format? It was a stack of deeds.
Well, there was a title, there's a sheet on the top. It gives a chart noting the years and the deeds of all the contiguous lots, charting it down, and that, that cover sheet is one that we've used for 15 different applications.
And then, but what's the chart of deeds doing for me? What's it about?
Just showing the history of the ownership of the adjacent lots. So, I mean, we'll, we'll provide more explanation on it, or change that cover sheet.
Right, but so it's a, it's a chart about the history of adjacent lots, and what's it, what's it doing for me for the argument?
We provided that with regards to the history of the lot, showing that the lots was separate and individual from adjacent lots, that it was a separate lot. In conjunction with the Sanborn map that we'll provide and more history of the lot, we'll do it, and we'll provide clarification.
That's what it should have done. There should have been a cover that says, attached to the deeds that show, the deeds of record for the whichever lot numbers. These deeds show that. The lot has been subdivided since whichever year that is, and has been treated as a subdivided lot since, and that there is no DOB records, which you also need to provide, where it's been treated as a, as a combined zoning lot, because, just because you subdivide the tax lots, doesn't mean you've subdivided the zoning lot, right? So how do we know that it's not still one zoning lot?
We'll, we'll provide that information. Just to clarify, that was provided with the original application, and in the notice of comments, there was no question regarding the deeds. We would have changed and provided more information if, if I had a question about it in the notice of comments.
But just a little bit of a theme about comments. You're the applicant, you're the arguer, right? You're the one who's in charge of making a clear and concise argument that needs to make the findings. So you can't just submit a bunch of stuff and have, expect for the examiner to put your stuff together and figure out what it means, and then for us, after you've responded to the notice of comments, to now figure out what the pile of stuff means. You're supposed to put the argument together, the statement of facts clarifies what everything is, uses those other things as exhibits that you refer to, and so it reads along like a novel. And if you don't do that, we can't figure out what's going on, and we only have to take your word for it, which we can't do, okay?
Understood.
Just a theme. You can't blame it on the agency for you not doing your end of the work, okay?
I'm not, I mean, you can speak about blaming the agency, however, if a notice of comments is issued and no questions are raised about what we've submitted, and we don't necessarily discover that there are questions the commissioner have until the review session before the hearing, you know, understood, that's the flip side of this, is that if, you know, this application was filed in January, and we didn't receive a notice of comments until late November or December, so like 11 months after it was filed, you know, when we, there was, there was like a 10-month delay in receiving this notice of comments. That said, when those comments come to us, you know, if anything had been on there, we would have hopefully addressed it. So, you know, we understand and we realize that the statement needs to be changed, and we'll make sure that everything is in a collective response, but, you know, I do feel that we need to point out that if the questions not raised to us, we're not necessarily going to know it's an issue until the review session and the hearing. From review session, we understand that, you know, the questions have been raised, and we'll address them all in the next submission.
Okay, just again, you're the person making the argument. Make an argument that's so clean and well organized with all the materials that it won't raise questions, because you know in advance what the questions are going to be, because at the very least, you need to make an A finding, okay? So just, just say it.
There was a question regarding the, the street line. You know, with respect to this application, we're not seeking to build anything within the mapped street pursuant to the Department of Buildings memo that was issued in January of this year. We're allowed to measure the yard to the lot line, therefore, no relief is sought or expected with respect to the mapped street.
Yeah.
Okay. Regarding the car sales, we actually contacted the owner. I'd been to the site two or three times, and I hadn't seen vehicles there. I contacted the property owner last night after review session. He said that he had a friend who had asked him if he could park cars there. We've just received a photo showing that they've all been removed, and we'll make sure that there's no vehicles there going forward, and we'll submit a photograph.
But it also had signage for used car for sale. I was there just last week.
Yeah.
And then it was full of cars.
I, when I've been there, haven't seen it, and as I said, I spoke to the property owner. We'll submit those photos, and we'll, we'll put it in a statement that no car sales are going to take place there. I don't know what the discussion was between the property owner and his friend, but suffice to say, going forward, there will be nothing.
Is some kind of barricade that says no parking?
We can put up a no parking sign on the fence, sure.
Is there a fence that goes across the property?
There's a, there's a fence, currently, there's a chain link fence in the front that sealed with a, like a padlock or a combination.
No fence.
It does, it does open, but we can block that off, put up a no parking sign there.
Okay, so I think we were talking about the, how the undersized lot came into being, that was...
Yeah, I mean, I understand the, the stack of deeds, and I sort of had the same problem, because in your narrative, you talk about that it had been in the same ownership up till 1971, I guess it was, but it wasn't clear exactly what happened after that in terms of, well, before that, was, was that lot being used in conjunction with the larger lot, which one might then conclude that it could be considered one zoning lot, so I think you have to put that to bed. If it's two separate zoning lots, has always been treated as two separate zoning lots, because then it begs the question, did you now just create an undersized illegal lot?
Understood, we'll get clarification, just to, and we'll supplement this in our submission, but just to clarify, the deeds, the 1960 deeds that were included, there's actually two separate deeds for this and the adjacent lot, were purchased in two separate transactions, and there's actually a diagram with those lots showing the dimensions of the two separate lots. We'll go back and we'll review any history in conjunction with DOB and the Sanborns to show that these have been separate lots, but there, there is information, at least the, the start of what we need to provide in the deeds, and we'll point that out. Like, I think we'll extricate them from the packet of deeds, just to make it a little bit clearer regarding that.
Okay. Okay. I think that was, those were the comments, right?
Then there was a question of parking.
Right. About how, where the parking could, how the parking could fit on the site.
Right.
And that it could... Sorry.
Like, with respect to the parking, I think the overall issue that we would point out is that if we were to provide any parking on the site, a curb cut would need to be created. I don't know what, I don't know if the architects reviewed as far as the distance, the legality of putting a curb, the curb cut in, but if a curb cut were provided, we would lose a minimum of one street parking space, one and a half, I'm not sure what the distance is, you know, keeping on the side. So when we're seeking relief from the required parking of two spaces that would be required, if we were to provide that on the site, to provide that on the site, we're already eliminating one parking lot from the neighborhood, so we are talking about a difference of one spot, maximum.
Well, but actually, you know, obviously, there's a public policy about providing the parking on-site as opposed to in, in the curb, right? So otherwise, there wouldn't be parking requirements, because you're always worried about the curb cut eliminating a parking space, right? So that can't be the reason for not providing the parking. It has to, has to have more to do with the size of the lot.
Right. Well, I, I just wanted to point that out, as far as that would be the net difference. With respect to the parking, any provision of the parking, since we're not allowed to provide the parking in the front yard, would require an incredibly small or cantilevered building. I think the ASR right, one of the ASR right drawings might show this, but we also presented this to the community board in discussion, and their preference actually was to have the design that we, I realize that this findings will still show the board, but, you know, the community, who would be mostly affected by this parking issue, actually preferred the design of not providing the parking, because they felt that providing the parking on the lot would either create a very unusual-looking building that was out of character with the neighborhood in conjunction with the removal of the existing street parking, but...
What about putting, putting parking on the ground floor, and just raising the building?
With respect to raising the building, the issue of the height that's proposed, I believe, is really in character with the surrounding buildings. If we were to raise the building, if it were to be built to the permitted floor area, since we're not seeking relief for the FAR, it would create a taller building that might not be in character, but if we kept the building smaller and raising it up...
It's a very small building.
The other buildings are taller.
This is a little diminutive thing. It could easily handle more height, whether it's, could handle as much height as raising it up, but it is a good question why it can't be...
We can speak to the architect and come up with a, you know, a, a plan or an elevation that shows what the building would look like if parking were to be provided on the lower level, you know, sort of a cutout first floor, the cantilevered first floor, showing the driver that comes in.
Shorter than all of its neighbors on the block.
I'm sorry?
Your design is shorter than all the neighbors on the block.
Significantly.
Well, I mean, if that's something, I, I don't think that, they said that the, the property owner wouldn't be opposed to raising the building if the board was agreeable. Often with these cases, height tends to be a significant concern, and so that's why the building was designed at the, the height proposed, but if we want to come up with an alternate scenario, raising the height and showing the parking, we can look at that scenario and present an alternative, and then, you know, raise that discussion here at hearing, but we think that once that is provided in conjunction with the current proposal, that what's proposed actually is more in character and a better design.
It's just that, I don't know if we can tell at the moment how, like, so the building to the apex is 24 feet, right?
I believe so, 24.5, I think, 24.47.
And you're, you're adjacent to another building on both sides, actually, that look like they're more in the, well, we don't know, because they're not mentioned, and I know they're estimates, and we didn't actually get a streetscape, a photo montage of the streetscape, so, and you had a strange response to that request in your notice of comments, that the architect doesn't know how to do that?
The architect said that, the architect, well, the architect said that the software, that he doesn't necessarily have the software available and the cost. I mean, this is a small, individual property owner and a smaller architect, and creating renderings of that sort, which might be very appropriate for a larger project, you know, in a larger instance. In this instance, the streetscape that was provided clearly shows, I mean, we can confirm...
The streetscape that was provided were drawings, so we don't have any photos of the streetscape. Normally, we ask for photos of the streetscape, so they're put together, for lack of a better word, it's like LePorello style, they're all, they're all lined up on the street, so you can see all the buildings and how they relate to each other, so that way it'd be easy to see whether this little house could handle additional height, so you can drive right under.
He doesn't even have to do it with software. If he doesn't have it, he can actually take the photos and put it together. As long as he takes it from the same...
We can take additional photos and show, you know, the vacant lot compared to...
I mean, this is something that's, that everybody's doing now, these little streetscape things. Everybody's doing it. So if you just ask the project manager, what's it look like, they'll give you a copy, and it's extremely low-tech. And I won't get into why the architect needs to learn how to do this other thing with a very cheap program, and even a tutorial on YouTube about how to do it.
You mentioned something about, I don't have it in my notes, about a parking survey? Did you do a parking survey?
We had, I think...
I think you just put it in your letter.
Yeah, we included a chart showing the available parking spaces that...
But there weren't many, there were like two, three, like that. That doesn't establish that there's a lot of excess parking if there's two or three spaces.
If that were my neighborhood, that would be a lot of excess parking.
So what happens if somebody has, like, friends over? Then you're out of luck.
I can't speak to the parties that would happen in the area, something like that.
No, I'm not even talking about a party. Your in-laws come for dinner. I mean, the place is crowded. That's not a party, the opposite of a party. So then the place is crowded, and there's no place to park, and now everyone's driving around the neighborhood, because it happens to be a night when in-laws come, right? So that's one reason to be...
We'll, we'll definitely look at the parking issue, but I just, I think it has to be, as we stated for the record, it has to be noted that any provision of compliant parking on the site is a net increase of one. It's a, it's a difference of one parking spot.
No, it's a, it's a net increase of one. Okay, but nevertheless, there is a public, otherwise, we'd have no parking in the city of these neighborhoods, because it's true. Every time you have a curb cut, you remove a parking space.
Correct.
But at least you get the cars off the street...
Sure.
Onto the property.
And I would say that when this was presented at the community board, and I would say the community board has a better sense of that neighborhood than any of us, the community board actually preferred the design showing no parking, because they preferred to keep the street parking. And that was discussed at the community board, both at the committee and the full, because we talked to them about the potential of providing parking on-site, and that's, that's the response that we received from them.
Didn't you show them, though, a 10-foot wide house? Obviously, that wouldn't have gone over big at the community, right? I don't know who lives in a 10-foot wide house.
The community board actually recommended approval of this application.
No, I understand that, but the alternative was a 10-foot wide house with five-foot side yards.
As far as the ASR right, no, but, but the alternative discussed with them was presenting parking on the first floor, so it would be a very small, like cantilevered, or like basement cellar on the first floor, and then a raised. They preferred the height of this building as proposed, as opposed to an alternative design.
But you didn't submit us that version.
And they didn't like the fact that you cantilevered the building out, that it was out of character. If you don't necessarily have to do that, if you can provide it on the first floor, or even, you know, kind of depress it a bit, you can probably, you know, get a car.
Well, no parking can be done on the first floor. No parking can be done in the front yard, or some different objections.
No, no, but it's inside the house. Inside the house, without sort of...
So a sloped driveway down. Again, when this was presented, they said that nobody there in that neighborhood had a sloped driveway. When I've seen it, no, none of the homes there had the sloped driveway going into the lower level.
Or even on grade. I think the, I think we just want to be able to see it and...
That's fine. I mean, we can, we can definitely present that alternate scenario for a comparison.
Okay, good, good. Okay. Are there any other comments? Any speakers on this issue? Okay, so, can you do that work in, like, three weeks?
I think that, I think if we had, I don't know what the, what's the first hearing? The April, the 14th?
April of the 14th.
If, if we had that hearing date, I think that provides sufficient time to come up with the additional information and do coordination. And I think it's better to take that time, because then it might be...
Okay, so that would be a submission on the 26th of March. Does that work?
That's fine. So 26th of March?
For April 14th.
For April 14th. Okay.
And again, I don't know if you heard that from others, April 27th is late.
March 27th.
I'm sorry, March 27th?
April 27th, we agree.
Yeah, that would be right.
Give those dates again. I'm sorry, Madam Chair, can you...
March 26th submission date, April 14th hearing.
Thank you, I'm sorry.
Thanks.
Sure, no problem. Thank you.
Thank you.
Item number four, 28914VC, 223236, 31st Street, Queens.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair and members of the commission. Frank St. Jacques from Sheldon Bell, representing the applicant. We attended the review session yesterday, and I just want to start addressing, by addressing the comments with respect to the acoustic wall. There's some doubt whether or not the acoustic wall had actually been installed, and I can show evidence that it had in fact been installed. I guess it wasn't entirely clear from the pictures we submitted. I have a number of new pictures that we would intend to submit to the board to show that the acoustic fence is, is in fact there. Actually, I have a...
It had been installed. These photographs are taken in the winters. Was that last winter?
No, they were taken a few weeks ago for, in anticipation of this hearing. So I can show you the photos that we submitted and point out the, even from back in the summer. So there's, there's not a detail of the, of the fence itself from back in the summer, but as you can see, this was from the first submission. There's a seven-foot-high wall, there's a wood lattice, and then the acoustic fiber and membrane are behind the wood lattice, and then there's a plywood at the rear, which is what was commented on at the review session yesterday. I have some photos from the top of the wall, and the, my client actually took apart sort of the exterior of the wall to show that there is compliance with the plans. So with respect to the layers of lattice, then acoustic fiber. So I'm happy to pass these out to the board, if I may.
Thank you. And what about the treatment of the back of that wall?
What's it?
So the, the back of the wall is, as was discussed, it is simply plywood. I think there's, there's, you know, areas where it's not painted, and that aesthetically...
Looks pretty bad. Even in the photographs, it looks pretty bad.
Understood. And I, you know, we're very aware that we gave you photos of the, showing the rear of the property that didn't show in a great light, specifically with respect to the landscaping, which I'll address shortly. But I, I think the acoustic wall seems to be a preliminary matter that, you know, I just wanted to make it clear that it is in fact installed with the same sound attenuation qualities as was mandated by the previous grant. I do have a sample of those materials, if anyone's inclined to see these. This is the quiet fiber and the acousta fence that are installed in the wall.
So, question, I don't know if you know the answer to it, because it's technical, but this is, I see there's lattice over it.
Correct.
But that means it's exposed to the elements, like rain and snow. Doesn't this decay?
I don't know the technical specifications. I know that we've been provided with a number of, so these, these materials are meant to exist outside. We have, when my client was selecting the, this type of fence, this was one of the options that was given, is covering the fiber, which my understanding is allowed to be exposed to the elements. These are typically exterior sound attenuation measures. In the materials that were provided, while they're selecting that, this particular product, a number of examples were shown with the exact same setup. I believe I have those in my files, and I can submit those to the board as further evidence that this is in fact compliant. I believe we submitted in our first submission a letter from the architect with respect to the deviation from the original metal panel that was discussed, and part of the initial grant, or the grant that, I guess the initial grant, for lack of a better term. The, this matte black wall was chosen simply for aesthetic purposes, you know, if any portion of that metal wall is exposed. Here, it's not, because it's disguised by this quiet fiber material, but it's reflective, it has an industrial feel. So out of aesthetic concerns, the architect and my client chose this option.
Right. Okay, so I'm not, I'm just not sure about it being exposed to the elements and retaining that acoustic quality, but your detail actually shows that it's a stucco wood wall on the, on the outside of this wall, so facing the residential. And it's clearly not, because it's exposed plywood. It looks really, really bad.
Right, so I think that, you know, that aspect of the wall has, as everything here has been exposed to the elements, with, with respect to cleaning up the exterior of that wall facing the adjacent properties to the rear, certainly, I'll ask my client to make those efforts. There was a comment with respect to storage of materials there, the ornamental fence that divides the dining area from the portion that's not used as the dining area, where there's plantings. That's shown in those pictures. All those, those materials will be stored inside and out, away from that area that's basically divides the acoustic fence from the adjacent properties.
Do you have, like, maybe you could provide an example of where this system is being used, other than, you know, your client?
Certainly. This is a, this is a company that's based out of Florida. They do international orders. The company itself is called AcoustiBlock, I believe. It's possibly a product name. But I did provide a number of pieces of information with respect to the specifications in the first submission. I can highlight those in what I anticipate will be our next submission. This, yeah, so it's AcoustiBlock. When they're selecting these materials, we were given a number, my client was given a number of options as to how to, what the menu was, as far as sound attenuation, based on the specific sound attenuation specifications he had to meet, and chose this. So I can, I can show you those different options.
Yeah, an example of where it's being used, and maybe a cut sheet from the actual company to see about installation.
It's possible that that is in your package. I can confirm, there's...
Some kind of specs that were...
And it's, I can confirm that the company is AcoustiBlock. They're based out of Tampa, Florida. And so they're, they have a website, AcoustiBlock.com. We can certainly provide additional materials there, and just highlight what we have provided in the next submission.
But the main thing is, it's some, this stuff called quiet fiber board, which looks like it's this fuzzy stuff.
Correct.
And then there's something that's an acousta fence membrane.
Correct.
I don't, I don't know if that's this thing that maybe looks like tar paper?
It looks like a black, and this is physically, it's like a black sort of rubberized...
Tar paper.
A plasticky, rubbery. It really is a membrane. It's a, it's a sheet that goes in...
So this was installed in January of last year?
So this was installed towards the end of, and possibly even after, after the expiration of the initial grant.
So it's only been, it's been up for basically less than a year?
Correct.
And it looks already really worn from these photographs?
Thanks.
So that's another question. It's like, how long does this stuff last?
Could just clarify that what you're looking at is the, my client physically pulled apart the assembly in order to show you what was inside.
Right, but I'm looking at the, like, the plywood is already pretty far gone. So it, it's not kind of weather sealed. That's the part I'm not getting about this.
I will check with, with my client and with the architect with respect to the, how the wood is holding up to the elements. It's my understanding that it's, it's physically sound. It's just, but I understand that the board has concerns with respect to the aesthetics.
I mean, that was the advantage of the metal. The metal was more permanent structure. I'm not saying there aren't other methods of doing it, but it's unsightly from the rear. It was supposed to be stucco.
Yeah, it's supposed to be a stucco finish, right?
And so how do you deal now with that existing plywood that's had a year's worth of freeze thaw, and now apply stucco to, stucco on lap, I guess?
Yeah, it's supposed to be on metal lap, but, but you might have issues now with your plywood. The plywood has been exposed, and it's, it's not the kind of plywood that wants to be exposed. So you may have some issues just in structure of the wall, being so exposed to the...
Now, I would note, you know, we are operating under a different application for a special permit, so I understand that we, you know, we're previously operating under the initial special permit grant, so we would just ask for some flexibility with respect to showing compliance here. We, this, the, we've met the sound attenuation specifications, and, you know, with respect to aesthetics, that it's point taken with respect to the plywood at the rear, but we, the client has, or our client has provided a wall that will block sound to the same degree that was required by the previous grant.
But aesthetics, by the way, are part of the findings of the board, that you're not by this imposing on neighborhood character in a way that would be detrimental.
And the big omission in terms of compliance is also the landscaping. It looks terrible.
Understood.
Nothing has been planted in the ground. There was an entire landscaping with evergreens and trees, and this was all done, supposed to be done to park department requirements, and they were all dead, and there's nothing there. That's extreme non-compliance.
If I may, I, the client has been having a terrible time keeping these, the evergreens alive. This is the second round.
Because they're in planters.
So the evergreens that are shown in the pictures at the rear are actually planted in the ground, and they're planted in the ground the first time they went around. They are shown in the pictures at the, believe, at the gate end of the site. There are shown a few evergreens that are in planters. My client has been attempting to find a way to keep these, these evergreens alive. It's a very shady area. There's the seven-foot-tall fence that's essentially, you know, blocking southern exposure for light isn't helping. The ground is, according to my client, very rocky and sandy, so they're really having, just having a difficult time keeping the evergreens alive. They're thinking about installing, and, you know, based on their difficulty keeping the evergreens alive, a large planter at the rear, something very deep that would allow the evergreens to sustain life during the winter months.
They won't, because if they're above ground, it'll freeze, right?
And I, you know, I'm just, they're looking into ideas to show compliance in an area that they've attempted to comply with and haven't had any luck. This is, you know, the plants on the exterior, as well as a number of the plants on the interior area, have all died. They've been replanted a number of times, and, you know, these are, these are trees they're planting, so it's, it has been a great expense and, you know, a great trial to, to attempt to have something that's sustainable out there. I'll just address the containers and the interior. The previous grant was for six plants and eight umbrellas in the interior portion. They've maintained those plants there. The last set was, I believe, which are not shown, and these photos were four- to five-foot-tall palm trees, again, that didn't make it.
I don't think palm trees would make it.
Yeah.
I don't see how...
Plastic palm trees might make it.
No, I'm not a landscaper. I don't, I don't, you know, know much about this, but the, my client has been discussing this with his team, to attempt to find something that works, because, you know, he's had two rounds of, at least two rounds of plants die on him, and...
What you're calling eight umbrellas, I don't see as eight umbrellas. It calls for a planting area with dense ornamental shrubbery. That was a different type of shrub, what you're calling. They were not umbrellas.
Point taken.
It's supposed to have an awning, not an umbrella.
Right.
And I can, I'll address the awning issue in a moment.
It was supposed to be 14, eight plus six planted ornamental shrubs within, inside of the soundproofing fence, and then an entire row around the exterior of the, it was supposed to add in the aid in the soundproofing of the outdoor eating area.
Understood. So the...
So what are the umbrellas?
Okay, my understanding was that the 2011 approved plans show, pardon me.
It shows a planting area with dense ornamental shrubbery. That's what it's called for.
Right, and then on the, on the plans, there's, it indicates that there's an area here with a number of, of these plantings, and then umbrellas in that...
Those are not umbrellas. That's a way, that's a convention for trees.
Understood. So there's been a miscommunication between myself and the architect, and we'll address that in the next submission.
It's actually 14 of those trees.
Right, yes.
Within the area.
Of two different kinds.
And then, then shrubs around the other side.
Yes.
So maybe what you need is hedges, as opposed to individual evergreens. I mean, privets. There's lots of things that grow like weeds where you wish they would stop.
Understood. I just, my only comment is that the, you know...
Even bamboo, actually bamboo is an amazing one, but I don't know if one would...
That is a...
Creates problems.
Yes. You might know why I would flip that on your...
So I, this has been an ongoing problem for my client, and I'll ask that they, you know, ramp up the, their efforts to have something in the area. They do have, have purchased a number of large planters for use either in the interior of, the interior space between the dining area and the wall, and the exterior, if, and believes that they can show compliance with using these large planters. I'm getting the sense from...
Whatever you put in a planter and you put outdoors in the wintertime, will probably freeze and die.
Yes. Not to mention that the planter will break if it's surrounded.
And this is, some of the issue that, with respect to other planters they've used, they used smaller ceramic planters, and those did not fare well. Now, the, I would just note that the outdoor dining area is closed during the wintertime, and, you know, the, it's possible that with, with a planter system, they could sustain these plants off-site during the winter months, rather than having them subject to the elements. And we're just, that's another possibility we're looking into.
That would be okay with respect to the ones inside, because those are to buffer the sound that's emanating from the active cafe, right? Outdoor dining. But it's not okay for the ones that are concealing the acoustic fence, which is an eyesore. That has to be a permanent solution. Vines. I don't know, you know, talk to a landscape person. Come up with something that's, yeah, English creeper.
Understood.
Virginia creeper.
Virginia creeper.
And if I may...
Poison everything. Worse than poison ivy.
If I may, address the retractable awning. I understand in one set of the photos, it's not clearly shown that it extends the full nine feet, which would be required to, with the 16 feet of the canopy that overhangs the dining area, achieves the 25 feet. I do, we submitted some darker photos showing the full canopy, and I can pan these out. They're a little dark here. I do have some additional... I do have some additional photos that we could submit, simply with a tape measure showing that it is in fact compliant, it's a nine-foot canopy extending from the sixteen-foot affixed canopy, the entire dining area measures twenty-five feet below.
So the picture that you sent us, it's actually like two retractable awnings?
So.
And one is closed and one was open?
Correct, so if we're referring to the. This photo here, the canopy actually extends out much further, it's only partially extended here, and there's, each canopy extends out in order to create a full additional nine feet from the sixteen-foot affixed portion, and here's the building wall here, got sixteen feet, and then an additional nine feet for the twenty-five-foot dining area. So that is entirely enclosed by the, by the fixed awning and the retractable awning.
Okay.
And I can, you know, happily provide those photos, you know, showing the length if necessary. The.
Sorry. Sounds like mine. Anchor bell.
Madam Chair, you commented on an error in the statement of facts in the zoning analysis, you're absolutely correct, there's an omission on the zoning analysis with respect to the compliance of the rear yards that carried over into the statement of facts, so we'll amend the zoning analysis to show that we're compliant with the thirty-yard rear requirement in addition to the rear yard equivalent. There's another error in the statement of facts with respect to the dimension between the rear wall of the adjacent premises and the acoustic fence, that is in fact approximately fifty-five feet, it's shown on the dimensions rather than sixty-five feet, which is the distance to the edge of the dining area, so certainly correct that. And then again, with respect to dimensions, I understand that there's some, I've spoken to the architect and asked that they basically break out the dimensions in a more legible, clear manner, to show on the plans all with, on both the site plan and the first floor plan, but they, you know, all of those dimensions do show that we're compliant with the dimensional findings with respect to the special permit sought.
Yeah, it's just that there, I think it's a scan of a scan of a scan, so we can't see the numbers anymore.
Understood.
So, I'm sorry, go ahead.
I think at this point, I would just ask if we could make an additional submission with respect to.
I also have a further question.
Yes.
You've got overhead wires and lights hanging from the wires, and I'm wondering about, there's lighting on the exterior of the acoustic wall that did not appear on any plan that we've seen so far, but it's there on the pictures.
Right, my understanding is that those are, I believe, and I can articulate this in the statement of facts, that lighting that's on the exterior of the wall is an existing safety light, there's no other lighting in the rear of the premises that's not on, except to access, if someone needs to access the site without a flashlight in the evenings. I can have, I can provide the board with further information with respect to those lights on the wall.
That would be good, and talk about why you've got exposed wires kind of dangling, and there's all sorts of other.
Miscellaneous.
Miscellaneous, yes. It's, it's very, it's very unsightly in the back there.
Okay, with respect to the rear view of.
So I think yesterday they said they need to corral those electric lines.
Yes, so.
Get them in some conduit or something, but they're sort of all over, and you've got these hanging lights, which you're not putting on your plan.
Right.
So I'm not sure whether they interfere with the neighbors in any way, because they're above, you know, they're above that seven-foot fence, they hang from the seven-foot fence, I guess.
Understood, so I'll, we'll articulate that lighting scheme on the plans and.
I guess they're.
You have a trouble with this?
They're on posts like above the fence.
Yes, but above the fence.
A couple of feet above.
And then they've got them strung.
Like hanging.
Yeah. Strung over the, yeah.
And I just would finally note that with respect to the neighbors, we have collected and will provide consents from a number of the neighbors at the rear of the property and those townhouses, this, I apologize, I can tell you precisely which homes those are. There's a home on 29th Street, 2250 29th Street, which is not shown in our site plan, 2235, which is. Apologize, at the rear of the premises, 2231 29th Street, and 2233 29th Street, so they're.
What do you have from them?
We have letters in support and then responses to the board's form for objection or consent, so if two, two supporting BSA forms and then two letters in support, which essentially articulate the same support that the BSA form requests with respect to supporting this project.
Okay, but I mean, it doesn't, the fact that the neighbors don't complain, I noticed they have their own fence, so they can't, when they're in a seated position on the ground floor, see how hideous this fence is from this side, right? And the deal was, or according to your own details, was that that rear wall was going to be finished, and it's not. So there needs to be a solution to that. It's shown as stucco, I'm not sure exactly whether that'll work anymore without additional something. So we need to see from the architect how to solve that problem, to conceal the wiring, to lower the lights so that they're, yeah, to hang the lights lower, I mean, you could use those wires to hang the lights lower inside the dining area.
Yeah, so that the lighting is contained within your space as opposed to bleeding out.
Right, it was supposed to be lower than the canopy, and this way it's shown is, actually, the way it's shown is you're not using the canopy, because they're higher than the canopy.
Right, they're above the canopy, actually.
And the whole point of the canopy is to reduce noise.
Yeah.
So I'll discuss this with the architect and come up with a lighting scheme that will show compliance with respect to the lighting. I just would note that they're, sorry, what's wrong?
Right, the lighting and how to finish the back of that plywood wall. Okay, and those stray wires and getting rid of those, okay. Okay, anything, any other comments? Any speakers on this item? Okay, so we can put this on for submission? Let's see, how about a submission date on, sorry, the 27th of March for hearing on April 14th?
That's perfect, thank you.
Thank you. Item number five, 32414BZ, 19830 Jamaica Avenue, Queens. Okay, this one, are there any speakers on this item?
No, that's his one.
Good afternoon, Sandy, unannounced to representing the applicant.
Hi, so because the submission was late, we'll consider this at another hearing, but if there were any speakers, we would hear them because there was a hearing notice. It's good to meet you finally, I've never met you, Marjorie Pearlman, or who are you? So let's see, since you already submitted, I think we could put it on for the next, available in two weeks, so that would be the 24th, right? You don't have any further submissions to make, right?
No, that's.
Okay. So March 24th, the next.
March 24th?
Okay.
Thank you.
This concludes the public hearing for March 3rd, 2015.